All right, Michael, everyone's in. We are recording. I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call this addition of our planning board meeting Monday, May 3, 2021 to order. The posted agenda pretty much stands as is. We're going to have a whole bunch of continuations tonight for different reasons which we'll get to. Did you have an opportunity to read the meeting minutes from our, I'm sorry, I'd like to ask for is a motion to approve the meeting notes that Jim has prepared for us?
No move, Edna. Second, Kathy.
Thank you, Edna. Thank you, Kathy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, I hope you all had an opportunity to read the April 19 minutes. Anyone who has not had a chance to do that yet. Okay, could I motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, Edna. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Under correspondence and announcements, I've spoken, we spoke with Mark Grominsky today, and we have a couple of members who have not been over to the Rhinebeck Villas project site. And so he is going to set up a site visit with the different people working on the project, sponsor, the project engineer, architect, things like that. So soon, a doodle pole or something is going to go around to see what date works for everybody so that we can do that site visit. I think it's a somewhat of a strange site, and I think given what's being proposed, I think it'd be very, very helpful. Those who haven't seen it to see it, and for those of us who have seen it, just to get a little bit of a reminder now that we have more firmed up plans about what the project sponsor is proposing to do. I guess I'd also remind everyone that we have to, I know that Gretchen has provided us with the different schedules for the different trainings we're supposed to take on workplace violence and all those other things. And so it's something that I guess apparently we are required to do to volunteer for the town of Rhinebeck along with the employees, what they're required to do. I've been told that the sexual harassment one is two hours, the other, which is three different topics, is an hour and a half. I believe there are no questions asked, so no, no, you can sort of maybe, I, well, I'm not exactly sure. You might have a good book to read while it's going. But anyway, they are expecting us to do that. There has been discussion with both Jim and John about trying to set up some training specifically for our planning board on issues that we're interested in, we're concerned with. So I think it wouldn't be a bad idea if there's particular topics that you're interested in, that you really would like to know more about. To let us know, you can let Gretchen know, and she can pass it on to John and Jim so they can try and put something together for us. We can meet our four hours of required training each year as planning board members. That's pretty much all I had. I don't know, Jim, if you had anything, like announcement or any information you wanted to pass on.
Michael, it's Sean. I just have a quick question. Is it possible when Gretchen sends over these trainings, if it's identified as mandatory, because a ton of trainings are sent over every week? And I want to make sure that none gets slipped through the crack.
The mandatory ones.
The only mandatory ones.
Okay, that's the difference.
Yeah, and it should say that they're mandatory in that.
Got it. All right. I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. Thank you.
Yeah, the other ones are the New York Planning Federation, so they're a little different.
Thank you.
They can be very, very good, but they're not mandatory. If they're on a topic you're interested in, you know, that's, that's one thing, but no, they are not mandatory. And we do get a lot of them, you're right, and Dutchess County Planning Federation sends them out as well, and Pace University often will send things out also. Virtual classes that they're offering.
It's Michael, just a quick clarification.
Yes.
Sorry, Michael, I was just gonna get a clarification. So they're not, they're not mandatory, the other ones, but it would help fulfill your, your hourly annual training that you need. The, the things that come from Dutchess County Planning. Sorry, go ahead, Michael. Sorry about that.
True. Yeah, they all, they all count towards those four hours we have to take, although we're still hoping to put something together locally, specific to the interests and needs of our own planning board in this community. Hopefully, we'll be able to pull that off. Okay, our first public hearing is Frank Pinto, 155 Way Road Pool Edition and Site Plans, Special Use Permit and Wetland Permit. They're still working with the Department of Health to try and sort out their septic system, to come up with a system that the Health Department can approve. So they have asked for us to continue their, their application, once again, the public hearing for their application to June 7 at 6:35 PM. Could I hear a motion to continue their public hearing to June 7 at 6:35 PM?
So move, Delise.
Thank you, Delise. Second?
Sean.
Thank you, Sean. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Very good. Our 6:40 PM, we will have a presenter, so unfortunately, I don't think we have anything we can do in the next five minutes.
Well, Michael, we do, we had the ZA referral for Hannah Barrett.
For replacement. Yeah. This is, once again, another thing, because it's an historic area, is referring to the planning board to determine whether or not we feel it should be.
He must have dropped off again.
We lost. Yep, I think we lost him. He'll probably bounce in and out a little bit. So there was a referral from the zoning administrator for roof replacement, which was going to go for potential HAPAC review. Kathy, I believe, did you take a look at that?
Not yet.
Review it?
Not yet.
Whether it is in a historic district, that was the rationale for the review. I think generally speaking, we are forwarding all referrals to the HAPAC officially, whether it's an expedited review or or regular review.
Gretchen?
Yes.
The address, please, so I can just be sure we.
317 Mill Road.
Yeah. No, we haven't dealt with it yet.
So.
Thank you, Jim, for taking it for me.
Do you?
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I just, you're going ahead to the referral.
Questions about this particular referral? Okay, I do have a resolution that Jim's prepared for us. I'm sorry, Kathy?
Sorry. Nothing. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board, upon referral by the zoning administrator of a building permit submitted by Hannah Barrett for roof replacement, finds that the proposed work does not raise any significant historic or archaeological concerns, and hereby refers this application to the HAPAC for expedited review and submission of a finding and written comments, if any, to the zoning administrator and planning board secretary. Could I hear a motion to approve?
A move, Melody.
Second?
Second, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we will, we will send that under the HAPC for an expedited review.
I think, or.
Right around 6:40. And our next public hearing is Scott Lyons, 6961 Route 9 Minor Subdivision. Mr. Lyons or his representative here?
Here, I don't know if you can hear me or not.
I can hear you.
Okay, I'm Dave Noah from. What are we doing?
Okay. Basically, you're telling us, I realize you just gave a new submission, a new map that we received, and if you want to take us through that, explain what you have there. And then I'm going to probably ask you exactly where you are with the Dutchess County Department of Health in terms of the septic systems for the two, you know, two proposed properties, once it's subdivided.
Okay, as you know, Marie, or may not know, Marie's still in the hospital, so I'm her party chief, and I'm trying to keep things moving until she gets back. We're hoping it won't be too awful long. The change we made to the map was we added the easement is the only change that we made because of, at some point, somebody asked that they wanted to see it. So that easement will be granted to whoever buys Lot 1B when this gets approved. The other issue that I heard about just today was that they had to have a Health Department approve septic for Lot 1A because, for some reason, I don't know. Anyway, they are, I talked to the client, they have all the materials on site, they're ready to build it, they're just waiting for the Health, Health Department to approve it. That's what I know.
Okay, now, have they approved the design for Lot 1B?
I don't think they submitted anything for Lot 1B, whether they're supposed to. Was that a requirement? I know Lot 1A was. Was there always the issue with Lot 1B?
Is there approved septic system design for that lot?
Not yet. But I don't even think they knew they had to.
Okay, because they have, yeah, they knew they had to. That's been a question for some time, and I know that Dave Pearson has been out there to the site to work with them. So basically, one thing we've been waiting on for since the Health Department.
Okay, so I will check on that to see what's going on with 1B. The engineer is supposed to be sending me a letter saying where they are. I don't know when I'll get it.
Okay.
Anything else you need?
Okay, so we're basically still waiting on the Health Department then.
Yes. Anything else?
Okay. I have no other questions. Any other?
Think we lost Michael, but I think his questions would be if any other planning board members have any questions for the applicant on this proposal at this time. I think we're going to have to continue this one. Due to the necessary to get the.
There is none, and until I get dropped again, we'd like to continue this public hearing to June 7 at 6:40 PM. Could I have a motion to do so?
So move, Melody.
Second, Kathy. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Kathy. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're all set.
I have one question before we go. Do you want to see these, yes, you want to see these septic systems on the map?
Yeah, absolutely. It will have to be shown on the map.
Okay, so I can change the map and put those on when I get them.
Yes, that would be very helpful.
Anything else you need on the map?
At the moment, not that I, not that I know of. Jim, is there anything else we would require that you can think of?
Not that I could think of off the top of my head. We had a few clarifying questions regarding the flag lot that I thought Marie was going to take a look at, just to confirm some of the depths and dimensions, and a copy of my memo, you know, will be sent out to you, so you have a copy of my notes. The only other question I had, I know it's a subdivision, but we do know this is adjacent to a historically significant site. Didn't know if the HAPAC wanted to review this or not. It's just a subdivision at this time. Well, like I say, we know in the area, it's, it is.
It hasn't, it hasn't been referred to the committee, and I don't think so. No.
Okay. Yeah, it's just subdivision now. Okay.
Yeah.
That's it for me at the moment. We'll get those questions forwarded on again and see where we land in June.
And that'll all come from Gretchen?
Yes.
Okay. Because Marie's not available to answer her email, so a lot of this got lost.
Understood.
Yes.
So, we good?
Yes, just wish Marie our, give, give Marie our best wishes.
I will.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing her soon.
Okay, we'll have it for you soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next public hearing, 6:45, is Joel Herm, 443 Mill Road Site Plan, Special Use Permit, Wetland Permit for Micro Hydro Generator.
Hello. Since the last meeting, I did go ahead and order plantings from the DEC for the approximate 25 feet of stream bank that has disturbed soil. Been working with them, and their packages actually contain 50 feet of plant life bundled. Now, we should be receiving those soon, so I certainly have more than a stream bank to use the other 25 feet of plantings. The other issue that came up in the last meeting was the use of the easement coming off of Morton Road. And I sent in a letter attesting to the fact that for installing the microturbine and any materials or any personnel that needs to come in to work on it, will come down our town-approved driveway and will use the footpath along the Landsman Kill to install the micro hydro turbine.
Okay, with, with reference to that, Joel, Ray Jokowski contacted Stephen Gill down at Dutchess County Department of Public Works about the road. And he has gotten back to us saying that the county would not permit the use of Old Fox Hollow Road as a vehicular access onto Morton Road, County Route 85, that portion of it, that they believe that there's only, should be only be one residential curb cut for residential use. And therefore, they said if there is some sort of emergency, something of that sort, you could ask them for a temporary permit to use that road down there. But it would then have to be chained off again and not used on any regular basis. So I think it's going to be probably a condition of approval that that be for your, for your special use permit and the site plan approval, that only your approved residential driveway approved in the subdivision, which Mary Meyerson did, be used for access to the property. And we can get you a copy of two. It was an email that was sent to Ray, and he sent it to me Saturday morning. And I was able to get it out to planning board members. Gretchen was for me this morning, so that's where we stand on that. It doesn't necessarily address the legal issue. I guess you said you had a potential pending lawsuit to address the easement issue. So I'm not exactly sure what bearing it has on that, but from the county standpoint, and clearly from the planning board approval for the subdivision with the other driveway, I think that as a condition of approval for what you wish to do, the Fox Hollow, the Old Fox Hollow Road will no longer be permitted to be used for vehicular access. I know there are a number of other questions that came up that you might want to address, that I know some of the neighbors have raised a couple of other issues they're concerned about at this time. And I think one of the key ones is the potential noise from the hydro generator. If you, you know, would like to sort of speak to that. I think a number of them are probably, you know, online right now and listening, and the public will be permitted to speak, you know, shortly. I just wanted to see if there's anything else you wish to add to your application and description of the project as you see it.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear that last part, Michael.
Okay, is there anything else you wish to say about your application, either the issues raised or anything else you wish to point out before, basically, I opened it to questions from members of the planning board, and following that to members of the public who are interested in this project?
Well, the, the Fox Hollow Road issue, I think, is totally separate from the special use permit. Because, you know, I'm guaranteeing you here on public record and by letter to the board that I will not use Fox Hollow Road to do anything for the installation of the micro hydro turbine. Do I have that wrong?
I think that.
I'm sorry, Melody. Melody, go ahead.
I was going to say the letter, the email that I saw didn't distinguish between the use of it for the microturbine engine. It precluded the use of the road in all circumstances for vehicular traffic.
Again, I still don't understand why anything about Fox Hollow Road has anything to do with the special use permit for the micro hydro. Because I'm attesting that I will only use the town-approved driveway to bring in personnel, materials, et cetera, to install the micro hydro for the special use permit.
A special use permit, site plan, application, anything like that through the approval process is an opportunity for the town to clear up any issues or problems that have existed. Obviously, you were using that road, put the material down to repair the dam, things of that sort. So it has been used for the micro hydro project. This is an opportunity with the county's blessing and the approval of the planning board for only one residential driveway, which is the one that was, that you currently use for your house, that was the approved one, to ensure that both the planning board's intent in giving that application approval for the subdivision and the county's intent that this not be used for vehicular access to County Route 85, Morton Road, is well understood and will be part of the resolution, so there'll be a legal basis. Should there be any further problems with that, the town would be in a position to enforce the non-use of that for vehicular access to Morton Road.
Understood.
And that's why I would like to see it as part of the approval resolution for this project. Other members of the planning board may feel differently, and they're entitled to that. That's my, my view, and that's how we've always tried to use approval processes.
Well, I'm fine with having the board look at the Fox Hollow Road and the, in perpetuity, easement as a separate matter. It just seems like the town is trying to stop renewable energy in the town by bringing in this totally separate issue on the dispute between us and 473 Mill Road. And I'm fine to mitigate that or work it out with the planning board on, in terms of the easement or the use of Fox Hollow Road, but as a separate matter, I would rather it not hold up putting in the micro hydro that Susan and I want to put in to help fight the climate crisis that we're all in.
I don't see how it would hold up the installation of the micro hydro, since you said you're going to use the residential driveway for the continuation of the implication, installation of the micro hydro. So I don't believe it has any bearing on that whatsoever.
Oh, good. Well, that's great. So let's work out that easement on a totally separate application.
I think, I think we'll, we'll look at a number of ways that we can work it in. I do recall, Joel, and I don't know the answer to this, but you, I do recall you introducing at the last meeting the idea that you might use that road as part of a forestry operation. So I, you brought that up yourself and said that you were doing that, and you might need access to that road. So whatever the solution is, I think we need to be guided by what we were provided by the county in terms of they do not believe that there should be any vehicular access to that road for whatever purpose. So I don't know how we document that, but I think it's important that we do do that.
Well, yeah, and I totally understand that we all, including Nick and Bert, would like to have this resolved once and for all. But I would rather not have that hold up or have the micro hydro be caused to settle it in haste. And that, that's how, I'm fine with having you approve the micro hydro special use application with the firm condition that I not use Fox Hollow Road for installing the micro hydro. And let's work out very soon in a separate matter, the use of, or the unused of Fox Hollow Road.
I'm going to reserve my, my decision on that until I've had some time to think about it. I mean, I think we can work it in a way that, um, you know, you, I don't see a reason why you can't go ahead with your, with the current project, but with the understanding that the county has advised us that there is to be no use of that road for vehicular. So let us, let's work on the language.
That's, that's fine. If you want me to rewrite the attestation letter, I'm happy with that, that be very clear and not even talk about Fox Hollow Road.
I, I think Jim can work in the language in an approval resolution.
Well, that, right, that's exactly what we'll do. I mean, in part of our due diligence, we reached out to the county, being a county road, and they gave us their, you know, their, their, their take on what needs to happen with that. So as part of our approval resolution, which is not going to hold anything up, we're just going to acknowledge, you know, what they wrote, it'll be in the file and acknowledge that for this project in particular, you won't be using that access to get in there. But what the county said is, is what the county said. That's their, you know, that's their statement.
Right, well.
Beyond that.
Which is unusual. I don't want to take up any more time on the Fox Hollow Road issue, but, you know, I spent two hours down in Poughkeepsie with the head of the Highway Engineering Department with maps of my property and, you know, their official county 85 maps, and he said it was okay. So I don't know what's going on if there's with the letter you got. So I would like to speak with the people that wrote the letter and just get to the bottom of it. But let's leave that.
We'll, we'll provide you with a copy of it. We have it in writing. We'll provide you with a copy of it. Something to that effect would be included in the approval resolution at the appropriate time.
And that would be great. Thank you.
Just this point, we move on and talk about other elements of the project.
At this point, I'd like to open it up to other members of the planning board if they have any questions or comments that they would like to make at this point. Any questions for the applicant or any comments?
I, I, I think what Melody was saying makes tremendous sense, and I think everyone sounds to be pretty much in agreeance, just that like getting the Fox Hollow language out of there makes the most sense and just commitment of not using it so that this, you know, ultimately important project and important for the environment can move forward. So I'm in agreeance.
Anyone else? Any comment or question? Edna? Okay, well, at this point, I guess we should open it up to the public. I think there are probably members of the public who wish to speak tonight on this issue.
Oh, yes, Peter Chrapko.
Okay, so, so what we'd ask you to do, you know, Peter, you can, you can start since you jumped in, but everyone else, if you would like to speak, if you can just send me a quick line in the chat, we'll try and do this in orderly fashion so that we can not have people talking over one another. Peter, go ahead, and anyone else, just please let me know on the chat box.
Okay, thank you very much. You have before you Bert Nelson's second letter, Nick Mattel, his first letter, and my second letter addressing this. My first letter having been March 20. I raised a number of points which are listed in my April 26 letter. The, the most significant one is that if this is approved to be, to make a micro hydro generator, there needs to be access to the micro hydro generator. My understanding, our general, our understanding among Nick and Bert and myself is that, is that that's the case now. Mr. Mattel, Dr. Nelson, and myself have all spoken back and forth with each other, and we agree that our three letters to the planning board, the most recent ones, do not contradict each other. In other words, they reinforce each other. Now, what does that mean? Well, it's, it's kind of self-evident that, that probably there's, there's not a single one of any of our points that, that we disagree with of the three of us. Now, if the. Now, if the planning board agrees to Mr. Herm and Ms. Hochbaum's proposal to do the micro hydro, it's my proposal that it needs to have access to wit. If there's a large snow, what do you do to get access to it? The turbine could be filled in or covered by much snow, icy snow. This is my third point on page two of the April 26 letter. So what I did, and without being presumptuous, I just said very briefly, this is a thing you could do. You would put it on a slab, you would enclose it, this is just an example, with a little bit of concrete block and put a galvanized door and frame that would allow access to it. These are only proposals, but there are proposals to enclose the micro hydro generator. And I said, in so many words, that this renders my consideration of acoustical problems from the earlier meeting we had last time, it renders them moot. What does that mean? It's the same situation. If you enclose it and you protect it from the, from the weather and from the elements, you've also protected it from that much better, pardon me, you've protected that much better acoustically. So this also does not address whether, like Dr. Nelson's idea of moving it closer here or there, but it addresses an idea of how it could be done. So the large if is that if you agree to do this, that is to say the planning board, and of course, Mr. Herm and Ms. Hochbaum, it would mean that you would enclose it in such a way that it would allow to be accessed during terrible weather. And I've been up here long enough to know that we've had two, three, and even more feet of snow in, you know, in a given time. Now, I entertain, I'm willing to have any of your questions in my regard, in that regard. I'm willing to have Mr. Herm's questions. And I hope that that makes my point relatively straightforward. I do not presume to design this thing, but to give a simple idea of such a thing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Peter, this is Joel. I really appreciate your thought that you've given to enclosing the turbine generator that would, you know, protect it from damage from the elements. Really appreciate your, you know, giving some thought to the matter as, you know, your professional architect and really appreciate that. And obviously, you're a smart guy and, you know, enclosing it to protect it from the elements would also reduce any issue of having the system be out of compliance with the town's noise ordinance, the code rather. So I really appreciate that.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Joel. I hope that the expression part and parcel is not so old that people are asking what it is. In a way, it's the same thing. If you solve this, you solve that.
Right, yeah, I totally get that.
Thank you.
On the other hand, this particular turbine generator is well designed and it's specifically made to be in conduit or it doesn't need a traditional powerhouse. In terms of the noise, certainly at your property line, you will not hear the 45 decibels from the turbine generator itself because, you know, the, it's going to be right next to the waterfall, which is creating a very consistent 90 decibels. And I'm sure you know as a man of science that sound is an additive. And in fact, there's some possibility that the sound frequency coming from the turbine generation would cancel out some of the sound frequencies from the actual waterfall. And in fact, there is an Archimedes screw installation over in Massachusetts where indeed, when they put in the turbine, it actually reduced the sound from the baseline of just the waterfall. So it's kind of.
Thank you, Joel. But, but it still doesn't.
Go on, Peter.
Okay, sorry.
But as I told Nick, when Nick and I walked the property 10, 12 days ago, should the board approve the installation of this turbine generator without a powerhouse? And if the turbine generator ever is out of compliance with the code, noise code of the town, we will immediately shut it down and do an investigation of, you know, how did the sound happen? And Peter, we would then gladly, you know, consider your idea of enclosing with some sort of sound enclosure, soundproofing enclosure, but it does not need a powerhouse to protect it from the elements. It's made to be out in the elements 365 days in ice and snow and, you know, in a fairly intense environment. I have to, you'd have to agree that, you know, we had 18 inches of snow this past winter, so. So it is made to be exposed.
Joel, I apologize for interrupting. I get very excited when I'm on Zoom. But, but I do, I do want to say that the number, not number one, but my first point on the April 26 letter addressed other sort of aesthetic points that Nick Mattel and Bert Nelson mentioned, which is that the possibility of making your dam more physically appropriate in terms of a stone facing, which would, you know, would, no one would argue at this point, I don't believe, to tear out the concrete and put something else on, but I think the possibility of a stone facing might be the best of both quote worlds.
Yeah, I mean, I, again, I would really appreciate the thought that you gave and, you know, the inch and a half, you know, stone facing, you know, to make it secure. I really appreciated the thought you gave there. However, you're bringing up a question of aesthetics, you know, some people like the look of concrete, others don't. And I guess certainly if this infrastructure, renewable energy infrastructure was certainly visible from, you know, the scenic beautiful Mill Road, I could understand you bringing that up. And so I just don't see how the aesthetics of this infrastructure that can only be legally seen by Nick and Prissa and Jonathan Mensch and maybe Andrea Colm Bell. They're the only ones that can legally see this without trespassing. So I appreciate the thought again, Peter. And indeed, I did, when we first bought the property, we did have Jonathan's side of the stone dam that did have some missing stones replaced at a cost of many thousands of dollars. So, but, you know, after Hurricane Irene came through and tore out the, what you're seeing is the left side in the pictures of the stream bank. You know, my, the hydro engineers have over, you know, 200 years of hydro experience said replacing this, the breach with technology that was used 130 years ago when the Sukleys put in this dam was not the way to go. That it needed to be at least 35 yards of concrete. And so you all know, I mean, everybody thinks that, you know, we, Susan and I just brashly came in and poured this concrete. But you have to remember that all of Lansman Kill was eroding for months and months and months of the stream bank and creating, you know, continual turbidity downstream from the breach of the dam. So we needed to act quickly. We did get, you know, after Irene, the DEC was writing emergency one day, dam repair permits because of the widespread devastation of Hurricane Irene and the huge storm that came, I think, 10 days later. So that's why it's concrete. It was the right engineering solution to stop the breach and stop all of Lansman Kill eroding the stream bank and making it turbid, you know, from the mile, from the dam going into the Hudson River. And if you need. The stonework, I would love to take you up on that because, yeah, I agree, it would be beautiful to have both sides of the dam, you know, to look like it did when the Sukleys put it in 130 years ago. But I think it's more important to get as many clean electrons into our house so that we stop using central Hudson kind of dirty electricity.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, kind, I guess I'm kind of being respectful or trying to be respectful. We have some other big applications coming in later and more people to hear from on this one. So I'm going to encourage us to move along to hear what other members of the public might have to say about this. Unless, Peter, are you done? I don't want to cut you off if you have more to say, but.
I'm done.
Okay. And Peter?
That's my point. I, I think I'm basically done.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter.
We do have Dr. Bert Nelson would like to speak. So if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Thank you for, for giving me a moment to speak. Let me begin with a reminder of the context of Mr. Herm's application. Joel Herm's, his application indicates that the electricity to be generated by his proposed project will be limited to the amount needed for the power of his one-bedroom home. And he also indicated that the proposed hydroelectric, electric system will not be connected to the central Hudson grid. And the clear implication is that the electricity that Mr. Herm plants to generate won't be sold or boughted nor provided to others. These are all reasonable things. However, we also need to note that in 2015, Mr. Herm entered into a 50-year contract with Stephen Mensch, which contract is automatically renewable for periods of 10 years each. That contract gives Stephen Mensch, under certain circumstances, the option to purchase up to 20 kilowatts of electric power from Joel Herm. And I'll quote from that agreement, quote, "at a price per kilowatt that is 5% less than the then-current Central Hudson all-in price per kilowatt," quote, quote. Now, this would seem to indicate that Mr. Herm may have future plans that move well beyond the limited approval he currently seeks from the planning board. But he also may not. And in fact, if his intent is only what he's set forth, I would respectfully request that you include those three conditions. That the generation of electricity be limited to that which is usable for his one-bedroom home, that the hydroelectric system not be connected directly or indirectly to the central Hudson or any other utility grid, and that the electricity that is generated not be sold, boughted, or otherwise provided to others. That would pin down the proposal to what Mr. Herm is putting forth.
Now, that's fine. I'll certainly attest to that.
On another point, it's, I'm not saying don't approve. I'm saying include those conditions because those are the conditions that have been put forward to persuade you to approve it. Second, at the last meeting that this matter was addressed, I can't remember who, someone on the planning board asked about litigation. Was there litigation still going about the former Fox Hollow Road? And you didn't get a direct answer, but the answer is yes. There is currently ongoing litigation that Mr. Herm initiated some time ago. But second, as Mr. Herm indicated, he and Mr. Mattel have begun a dialogue in an effort to resolve whatever issues they may have. However, I need to remind you, third, that for 10 years, Mr. Herm has been ignoring that portion of the Rhinebeck zoning law that indicates that only the approved driveway may be used to access this property. So this brings us to the letter that Mr. Herm recently submitted to you. And I want to quote from it. It said in part and in part, quote, "I agree to not use motorized vehicles over the existing access road at the southern border of Susan's and my property to bring in building materials, equipment, or personnel during the construction of the Waterwood micro hydro project. We will use our town-approved driveway for those purposes," close quote. I'm glad I'm not on the planning board because I found that letter an affront and an insult. Mr. Herm is agreeing to obey the Rhinebeck zoning law, but only for this limited project. Everyone else has to obey the zoning law at all times. And I think you would be absolutely correct to require adherence to the use of the one-approved driveway. Finally, I have a suggestion. Thank goodness I'm not on the planning board. It's your responsibility. But I think under the circumstances is a very rational thing to do. Since Mr. Mattel and Mr. Herm have begun to talk, I think they should be given the opportunity to resolve the issues between them. I strongly encourage the planning board to put over any action on the application for 30 to 60 days. My suggestion is that you give these two neighbors the opportunity to resolve the matter between them. That would be a gift to all of the neighbors. And with that, I thank you for the opportunity to be heard.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. Jim, anyone else who's to speak?
Yeah, one more, Michael, Nick Mattel, if you'd like to unmute yourself. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I think that most everything has, has been covered. I think the first, the only thing that I would like to say is, is that there seemed to be some confusion about the county view with regards to the road not being usable. And that is, to me, the, the county view would, one, can't be ignored. Two, needs to be agreed to in full by Mr. Herm before proceeding. And three, it seems like it resolves the issue of the litigation. So given that the county has opined in this way, which I'm supportive of, obviously, because I don't want traffic down that road, abandoned road, now the litigation could, could be dropped. And so then Mr. Herm should, should, should drop it or just, or better even yet, dismiss it with, with prejudice himself. So, so to me, that's, you know, it turns on this and then Mr. Herm needs to act in regards to the litigation. Secondly, with regards to the noise. Secondly, with regards to the noise, I'll be candid, I have, I just don't know what to think. I haven't, I know what Mr. Herm is saying, I know what Mr. Turapco is saying. And, and I'm just not sure I've seen anything certifying exactly what the noise levels will be. Like, you know, engineer certification. And I certainly understood Mr. Turapco's point that it should be maybe contained somehow. But I would also think maybe we could just move the hardware away from the property line if, if, if this was something to consider. If we do end up, if you are going down the path of, of, of approval. So, so, you know, th- these are issues before you that, that I hope to have some more certainty on before having a. You know, and I certainly think that the county view needs to be abided by and agreed to in full. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mattel. Uh, Jim, anyone else wish to speak?
No, Michael, I think that's it.
Anyone on the planning board, anything else they'd like to bring up this evening? We will be continuing the public hearing. Okay, Joel, any parting comment you'd like to make?
Yeah, sure, I mean, Nick, you're not a party to the lawsuit that was orchestrated by Rodenhausen on our behalf against Ms. Boucher. And I certainly don't want to spend any more money on legal fees on, on this easement. So I, I will have Rodenhausen. Shut that down. Again, you, you're not a party to it anyway, but I'm saying here in public that we'll make that go away. But I do. Feel a little bad that we're using the easement issue as hostage to stop. Renewable energy from being installed in Rhinebeck. So it feels. Not quite right, I guess. And like I promised you, Nick, when we walked the property together, that if the noise does become a problem, I will. Shut it down and figure out how to baffle the sound if need be. My engineers are saying that it won't be an issue, but I understand the sensitivity. And it can't be moved any further away from the property line or further away from your house, Nick. Because it's right at my property line already, as far away from your property as possible. And I agree with you, Bert, that it's great that Nick and I are working this out and I'm sure we will. In terms of the use of, or the use or not use of the access road.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to say this evening?
Have a question for, for Jim.
We'll just reiterate what, yes.
I, I was just going to ask, there's a way, I mean, the, the decibel level of the noise. Is there a way that something can be in the approval resolution that indicates if it goes above a certain, it cannot go above a certain level? Is that something?
The, the approval resolution is a document, you know, that the planning board, that I draft on your behalf. And the planning board is welcome to put whatever, you know, restrictions or, or caveats in there that, that you feel makes sense. One of them I was going to actually talk with you about offline later on before we get to that point is just related to the sale of, of, of power. I think that this use is probably, should be similar to what we have with our solar energy law in terms of individual use for power. So we'll, we'll talk about that as well. But yeah, certainly anything the planning board feels is, is, is applicable in the approval resolution.
I, I'm just suggesting you have three neighbors indicating their, their concerns, their uncertainties about the noise level. But we ought to be able to write something into the approval resolution that addresses that. And goes as far as we can go in terms of assuring them that their noise will not become disruptive of their home environments.
Wouldn't that just be that the installation needs to follow the existing code?
Well, whatever it is, yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that. But I think that based on the comments from the neighbors, you know, tipping our hat to the fact that the noise level has been raised. I think it is realistic to reinforce that.
Put that in the language, sure, that makes sense.
That's all.
Yep. Anyone else have anything else wish to say this evening?
Can I just ask a question because I'm curious? Someone referenced just concern with a 50 year agreement with one of the neighbors for using the electric. And maybe it's a planning board member answered, I'm not sure, but tell me what the concern is behind that. Like, sharing the, is it because it's a commercial use that we're concerned about is selling it to the neighbor? Or is it, is it just like an easement that's tied in? I'm just, I want a little more information.
We're being, we're being asked to approve something based on an assertion that this is for residential use only. And the allegation has been that there's an agreement that suggests that some of this could be sold. So we need to resolve that, we need to answer that question or the application changes and you review it in that light.
May I answer your question? Louise, the commercial use problem came up based on the language of the road easement. That says Susan and I can use the full roadbed of Fox Hollow Road for any residential purpose. Bert picked up on that discrepancy if we use the electrical line that we put in. With Central Hudson's blessing underground onto. Partly on Nick and Pritha's land that, that would, if we sold electricity, that would be using the easement for a commercial use, not a residential use. So. We will be, and we offered this to Ms. Boucher to take out that line because we're not going to be using it. Because we're just going to be powering our own home with electricity now. So that's the discrepancy. And so I think Bert's bringing it up tonight, that the easement that we wrote with Jonathan, who at the time thought he might be doing residential development. On the other side of Lansman Kill, which we wouldn't need the easement going up to Morton Road. That's why Jonathan and I put that language in, in the easement. So again, the road easement issue, I really need us to bifurcate that from the special use to be able to put in the small little renewable turbine. To make a net zero house in Rhinebeck. To help fight climate change.
Okay, thank you.
Nick, did you raise, Nick Mattel, did you raise your hand again or are you good to go?
I did raise my hand again. I was just going to say that, that. Miss, you know, again, I'm just new to all this, but like Mr. Herm is in one hand saying that he wants us to separate the easement. And another point, he is, he keeps saying that the easement gives him certain rights. I don't believe that those are the rights that the, that the easement gives him. And it would be good to, you know, in my opinion, solve everything at once. That way, none of us are, are, are dealing with this again. There is the issue of the underground cable that's buried on, you know, what is now, you know, my property. And, and Mr. Herm is, you know, acknowledged that, you know, there is also the issue of, you know, the, the test, the, you know, the agreement. He has to sell power somewhere down the road. But so, so I don't know about that part of it, but I will say that I, I think that the way we're framing what the easement provides, he's framing is, is incorrect. I do believe that.
That's fine, I agree.
And then the second point that, that I would like to make is, is no one is holding, you know, renewable energy hostage to anything. Mr. Herm could do solar on his property, he could do geothermal on his property. This has particular concerns relevant to the neighbors. And so we are all just trying to make sure it's something we can all be comfortable with. Thank you.
Agreed.
Okay, again, I'm going to maybe try and be a little bit of parliamentarian here. I, I do think that we have very spirited conversation going on, a lot of questions. But I also want to call attention to the other people waiting. So if we can, hopefully, we can look to wrap this up. And I, I saw Bert's hand go up and I'm not trying to cut you off, Bert, but I am asking for a little, little help here. So that we can get to the other matters on the agenda.
I'm happy not to speak anymore.
Okay. I think we, you know, Jim, you're asking, I think, for a motion to continue the public hearing.
Yes, I was looking to see if Michael's here, I think I might have lost him again.
Well, maybe Gretchen can confirm for us that it would be to June 7th as well and at 6:45?
Yes.
Okay, so I make a motion to continue the public hearing to June 7th at 6:45 PM.
Second, Edna.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your contributions and for your opinions. We appreciate it. I think that would take us to the next public hearing. I'm waiting for Michael to jump back in, but until such time, that would be Mike's Tree Service Route 9 Site Plan Review for a business office. Are people here from Mike's Tree Service?
Yes, Mark Remenski and Seth Stickler are here, Melody.
Okay, well, we'll open it up for you to refresh the board's memory in terms of what the application is. And then we'll proceed with questions or comments.
So last meeting with the planning board, we had, it was public hearing for. And I believe all issues and, you know, questions were relative to the, you know, development of the site plan. The building architecture and, you know, mitigation of some of the concerns that were initially brought up by the planning board. And then our next step was to go to the Town of Rhinebeck Zoning Board of Appeals. Because part of this application was to request an approximate 15 foot area variance for front yard setback. To be basically, well, multiple reasons, you know, to allow for some further design considerations and development of the rear of the property. And then also, we had provided a analysis of the location of the, the front yard setbacks of various buildings along both sides of, of Route 9. To support the, to support the application with the ZBA. We did have our meeting with the ZBA and ZBA. Closed, closed their public hearing and their decision is due at the next meeting. At that, at that time, you know, at the, at the time of the planning board meeting last month, there was some, you know, hesitancy for, you know, condition. Of approval for the project, you know, awaiting a decision from the ZBA. Obviously, we're still awaiting that decision, but it seemed to be no issues with the ZBA. And we are anticipating approval of that yard, area variance.
Was it only the ZBA mark or was there also Health Department approval?
So we're still awaiting approval from the Health Department and also New York State DOT, Melody.
Okay.
You know, I guess that we're, we're back to requesting if the board would consider, you know, an approval based on. A contingent approval from the planning board based on, you know, approval, gaining approval from the Health Department, which we feel will, we will do. And then also with the New York State DOT, we're still awaiting a decision from DOT. But we're quite certain that we'll, we'll gain that approval. And the same thing with the Town of Rhinebeck Zoning Board with regard to the front yard setback. Other reason, you know, one of the reasons for the, our request is so that the. Design architect can start to develop a detailed construction plans for the building.
Oh, yeah, I, and I do remember the architect expressing his desire to be able to move ahead. But I also remember that we were reluctant to, to even do a contingent approval based on the fact that we didn't have anything back from DOH or DOT. That, that is my recollection of where we left it.
If I could, Melody, just for example, Dave's Tree Service.
Yeah.
Did have a, a resolution that approval contingent on Health Department DOT.
Well. I don't know. Oh, he's.
If I could while I'm still here.
Yes, please, please jump in.
I could make a suggestion. Yeah, I probably won't be here for long, the connection here is getting worse and worse. I do not recommend Frontier to anybody. I thought we might be able to do is ask planning board members if they have any concerns other than getting approval from DOT and Department of Health. And the ZBA, which seems, you know, very much in favor of giving the thing. If there are any other issues they have that they feel would cause them to not favor the project. And in that way, if there aren't any other issues other than those three that we know we need before we can consider an approval resolution. It would at least almost like be a straw poll perhaps, it's not a contingent approval, it's nothing like that. But it just gives the applicant a sense that we think the project is approvable. But we can't do that until we have DOT approval, Department of Health approval, and of course the ZBA zoning variance approval.
So.
Michael, did you not? Sorry, Michael, did you not also indicate at some point, given the nature of the project, it would be appropriate for newer board members? Who had not had an opportunity to visit the site to do so in order?
I know that. By another.
New board members did visit.
Joe, Joe and I did the site visit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how many have you seen it? Just two?
Well, just Joe and I have seen it, yeah.
So, Michael, your, your thought is that? If we did a straw poll and generally people indicated that their support without an official vote, that that would give confidence to the architect to move ahead? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, Mark, would that give confidence to the applicant to move ahead?
You know, I, I, I think so, it's just, once again, Dave's, you know, the difference, you know, Dave's, we actually had a, a resolution for that. But I understand that, you know, ZBA, waiting for the ZBA is, is a little bit different for this project.
Well, it, it does make a difference.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, definitely, I mean, you know, some signal, signaling from the board members would certainly be appreciated.
I can, I can only, I'll, I'll speak for myself and that's, I am not resisting voting based on. Based on the application and the improvements that the applicant has made. It's simply, I, I resist approving things until I've heard from the official referral agencies. So I support the project, I just would myself be more comfortable waiting for those official approvals. So I don't know whether that's a straw poll vote or not, but that's my opinion.
And I have to say, I concur with Melody.
Sean, you have an opinion? In other words, are there other issues other than waiting for the DOT, Department of Health and the ZBA variance approval? That you feel still need to be resolved, that would potentially hold up the project?
Could I ask what would happen if the board voted to approve this contingent on what has to happen? And then the ZBA did not provide the variance? Then what?
Goes away.
What goes away?
Well, they'd have to address the, the fact that they didn't get the variance. They'd have to re, you know, revise the application to reflect that.
Revise the site plan, right?
Yes.
And, and come back, and we'd have to reset the public hearings and things like that. We'd have to start over in a way.
I, I guess my only concern, Michael, is I feel like this is kind of a repeat conversation from last time we talked about it. So anything we can do to avoid that over and over again, I think for both parties, it's, it's to our favor, so that's not providing a lot of clarity.
Michael, may I be heard?
Yes, John. Welcome.
Hi, hi. So as you know, I'm, my firm's the counsel to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and at the la, this was taken up the, at the last meeting. And although the board has not voted yet, I think the, there, the Planning Board should consider that there is a very, very high level of confidence that the Zoning Board of Appeals is going to grant the variance.
Does that give you any better level of comfort, Sean? Because I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, but, but my comment was more of, it's just it's a little Groundhog's Day, so whatever we can do to provide value to both sides, I'm just having the same conversation a couple of weeks out, just.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes, sometimes these conversations continue because decisions are out of, you know, referrals and opinions back from those referrals are out of our.
No, Melody, I'm, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, but we're, we're just, we're just, like I said, we're just having the same conversation with, with no further progress. So how are we, yeah, whatever the means from that is, is, is separate from the reality, so.
I, I think I've heard, I, we haven't heard from everybody, but, you know, I think we've heard people saying that they expect this to go through and hope that that conveys to the applicant and the architect the level of confidence they need to move forward. You still have to wait for the response from the Zoning Board of Appeals, and it's nice to hear John say, you know, he has a high level of confidence, but there's still going to have to be that time anyway. That's out of our hands, so. I, I mean, I, I.
Or I, I don't want to take up their time, and I appreciate it. The only thing is just consistency. So once we have ZBA approval to, just as, as we did earlier with Dave's Tree Service, once ZBA approval is, is obtained, it would be a resolution subject to approval from New York State DOT and also Dutch Scouting Department of Health.
When, when is the ZBA likely to act? What's their next meeting?
Oh, it's, it's, yeah, so it's, so it's this month, and so it would be back, we'd have to be back on the agenda in June, right? Yes, in June.
No, I was trying to figure out when they, you know, our next meeting would be.
The ZBA meeting's May 19th, Melody.
It's always two days after.
Let me clarify one of my comments. I mean, this is a business that's looking to invest into the area. And so I, if, if there's anything we can do in favor of making it preliminary on other decisions, I think it is in our favor to do what we can. I, I don't want to be someone that told someone back, but I also want to make sure that all the other approvals are in place.
And they will have to be before we could approve the project. All the other approvals will have to be in hand before we would be in a position to approve the project, so that would have to happen. Joe, do you have anything?
I was just gonna ask, what, what is moving it forward today do if we're still waiting for the 19th for ZBA approval? What can they do in the meantime?
I think that's just to have enough confidence to actually have the architects go ahead and start doing the design work and all the different things that have to be done to actually.
Understood, understood that I'm, I'm fine with it then.
Somewhat reluctant to do that.
I understand. If that, if that's the issue, then I'm fine with moving it forward.
Okay, thank you. That is the issue. Delise, did you have any, any thoughts on this?
Well, first, I'm sorry for going off mute a few minutes ago accidentally, but no, I, I agree. I think there's, I don't, I think it's fine getting it started and moving it along, and I think it saves time and ultimately seems pretty. It doesn't seem like there's a lot of risk in doing it.
Thank you. I think, Mark, that's, you know, sort of.
Understood. Thank you.
I think the project is looked upon favorably unless the Health Department says no, or that DOT says no, or the ZBA says, you know, redesign. I think that there's definite support for the project.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
At this point, could I hear a motion to continue this public hearing to June 7th at 6:50 PM?
Second, Melody.
Okay, I'll, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. And since I was not here for it, did we continue the Joel Herm public hearing to June 7th at 6:45?
We did.
Yes, we did.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, our final public hearing for this evening is Rockledge, 492 Ackert Hook Road, Site Plan Approval, Special Use Permit, and Wickland Permit. And I think Mark is going to be taking the lead on this.
Yes, Michael. Just to, you know, before we start up, and I just wanted to discuss this with the board, is since we've had, you know, the, the last meeting was, I tried to provide a comprehensive presentation of what is, you know, occurring in the, you know, the, the details regarding this application. And then also, since we did have, we have, you know, had a site meeting for, you know, update for the existing board members that have been involved with this from the beginning, and then also allowing new members of the Planning Board to, you know, sit through a, once again, a, an explanation and providing details, specific design details and, and details relative to this application as, as, as required by the town zoning code. To just briefly, just, just briefly, you know, introduce the project again. I have requested that multiple team members for the project be available for this public hearing, and also they're prepared to speak briefly regarding their specific input and expertise that have been provided for design of the project. I guess in summary, just trying to keep the, my presentation, you know, brief and concise, and then allow time for the Planning Board members to have questions, you know, obviously be able to open it up to the public. I think I probably spent too much time just explaining that. I should have just.
It's a big project.
Yeah, it is. So.
Mark, Mark, I also think it's fair to say that not only did the Planning Board members have a chance to visit, but so did the HAPAC Committee, and so did the neighbors.
Yes, they did. And so we, it was two Fridays, walked the site and provide, you know, answered, you know, questions. And once again, just provided a, an overview of the project, and several of the team members, you know, on the consulting team were present, along with the owner, for both the meeting with the, with the town members and also with, with the neighbors. So I guess I'll just, once again, just quickly describe the project in, in opening the public hearing. So this, this application, is, is that okay, Michael, to proceed that way?
He's gone.
Come on.
Yeah, I think so, Mark, but I'd like to leave enough time for the public comment, so.
Yes.
As concise as we can. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Again, this, this, this project has multiple applications in front of the Town of Rhinebeck. It's also, it's with the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board and also the Town of Rhinebeck Zoning Board of Appeals. The project is for both subdivision, site plan, special permit, and also an area variance request. And so the, the first three items, subdivision, site plan, and special permit are under the, with the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board. This application total, you know, the property is located on the westerly side of Ackert Hook Road. It's approximately 138 acres in size. The subdivision request is for three lots, three lot subdivision. What drives that request for a three lot subdivision is the, is the adaptive reuse of historic structures that are located on the property. And in order for the applicant and owner to be able to utilize and appropriately care for those structures through historic restoration. The, that's the purpose of the subdivision. And so those, the subdivision, two lots created in the subdivision are for two of the historic structures, one being the manor house, the larger house of the property, and then the other being what's, plans defined as the stone barn, which is closer to the southerly access to, to the property. And that would be lot number two. And then lot number three is the balance of the property, which is to be utilized for new construction for condominium units. As I said, so it's 136 acres in size. I, with, with the access to locate on, on exact, on Ackert Hook Road. Its utilization to access points that are going to be important in, in development of this site. The northerly access point will be modified to meet current standards for entrance and, and being allowed to provide adequate site distance. The more southerly one, and it looks triangular, and it's near that stone barn, does not meet sightline requirements, and so that's going to be utilized as emergency access for the property. Once again, so the northerly entrance, it's that law, it's a long entrance with a lair of trees that will, as you enter into the property, to access both the historic structures and the new condominiums will, will be the primary access. The circulation of the, of the, the road network system shown on this plan, we try to utilize existing carriageways as much as possible. There will be some new construction of roadways that are required in order to, in, in order to utilize and, and respect the existing topography of the site and natural physical features. There are several wetlands that are located on the property and are shown on this plan and, and have in the upper right-hand corner of the, of this, of this plan that Jim has up, have been delineated and, and appropriately referenced with this application. It's shown on the plans. The majority of the wetlands are state, or excuse me, are federal wetlands. There's one large state wetland located in the southwestern portion of the property. And in, in a to that, it also, plan also shows, you know, other existing physical features on, on the property. So back to the, you know, this, I, I did speak about the, you know, the reason for the subdivision and the adaptive reuse. It's utilizing those, those two historic structures for adaptive reuse. I'll just briefly go into what is required from the, the reason for the application to the Town Zoning Board of Appeals is that the section of the zoning code allows for four units, or units to be created on each parcel. And in this case, in order to more carefully and respectfully develop the site, the request has been made to the Zoning Board of Appeals to allow for two units to be utilized in the stone barn. It's where Jim has his arrow right now. In order to, you know, minimize the amount of disturbance close to Ackert Hook Road, just a small disturbance, or no, I shouldn't say disturbance, just a small addition has been placed on to the, into, onto the southerly portion of that building. And therefore, so two units are proposed there with six units are proposed to the manor house, where Jim's circling right now. It's a larger building that, that can accommodate those units. That application is currently in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we are, all materials have been submitted, and we have been awaiting, we have to await for a decision from the ZBA until the Planning Board is allowed to review this project to a, a point where they feel that they can make a secret determination for this project so that the ZBA can move forward with their application.
Right.
So then, back to the planning board aspect of it. The, they, once again, I mentioned that the, you know, I just spoke to the, the two units for adaptive reuse of those structures. Then there are seven clusters, four units, that are proposed on lot number three. And that's, that's all new construction. And along with that new construction of, of the units, this plan, and there's multiple sheets associated with the project, consider the redevelopment of, of the site to accommodate those. And so that redevelopment considers, you know, key, key features, you know, key features, features for infrastructure. I mentioned a roadway network that we tried to work around the existing topography and the physical feature, natural physical features of the site. It utilizes existing infrastructure on the site, so this site, you know, the, the previous user and owner of this site had developed a central water supply and also a central sewer located on the property. And so the, this development will, will continue to use those, the, the, use the, the existing infrastructure that's in place along with construction of new infrastructure to, you know, to, to accommodate the, the units. The, I, I also mentioned, as part of the design, there's a stormwater management plan that has a detailed stormwater management plan that's been prepared that considers redevelopment of the site and management of the store, management of the stormwater. And I'll say the management includes also treatment of the storms in compliance with all New York State DEC. That plan is currently under, under review by the town's engineering consultant. One of the other items that has been addressed as part of this project is, so I mentioned existing infrastructure with water and sewer. So it was redevelopment of the existing water supply for, for the site. And so the, the owner and applicant has that has retained a groundwater consultant to extensively explore groundwater conditions of the site and, and, and adjoining properties in consideration of adjoining properties. What ultimately occurred was redevelopment of the existing wells of the property. What ultimately occurred was redevelopment of the existing wells of the property and to the point where it was determined that the groundwater source, source capacity for the project was, was adequate in, in, and that's in compliance with our regular regulations developed by both the state health department and the Duchess County Department of Health. That information, and there was extensive along with the exploration of the groundwater, there was extensive, extensive pumping test that was performed in, in, in accordance with Duchess County Health Department and New York State Health Department requirements to ensure adequacy of supply and also to ensure that there was no interference with any joining in off, in offsite water supplies. And finally, you know, part of, part of the investigation included, you know, not only the wetlands, but other environmental, environmental aspects of the project and and, and maintaining respect to those, you know, the environmental aspects of the project. They considered traffic considerations for, you know, the existing conditions onsite and also what this would generate. Archaeological investigation for areas that are disturbed on the site. Those, as I mentioned before, as I began this we do have those, we have consultants that in those, in the various areas available tonight, if the board has questions for the consultants. I think I'll stop there. And so just lead it to, you know, planning board members to have some discussion or questions they have.
Any, any questions from Mark on, on the presentation so far from members of the planning board? Okay, I know we had a pretty good chance to ask what we, what we wish to ask at the site visit. I think, Mark, it might be best if, you know, the, you get the other people to do what they're going to present right now so we can open it up to the public. So they'll be aware of all the different aspects that you wish to present tonight when they ask their questions. It might sort of help to speed things along with the questions.
Sure. Jim, do you have, so for, for traffic, is Mark Sergeant in the queue?
Yes, I saw him in here.
Yeah. Mark, are you there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, if you could just provide a brief summary of, of the work that you've done regarding to traffic analysis for this project, if you'd please.
Sure. Good evening, folks. Mark Sergeant, project manager with Creighton Manning. And we prepared the traffic study for the Rockledge project. Originally, the study was prepared in April of 2018, and then we also followed it up with a couple of addendums over time. But what we found that you all already know is that it's access is served by some low volume roads with daily traffic ranging from about 200 cars per day to maybe 450 cars per day. The site itself is estimated. The trip generation estimates for the site have fluctuated a little bit over time associated with some of those addendums that I mentioned. From a high of about 40 peak hour trips to the most recent addendum where we estimated the 36 condominiums would generate 24 peak hour trips. So as the uses on site have changed over time from the country end to the condominium project, the estimated trip generation has come down to 24 trips per hour, and that's P M peak hour worst case. And that equates to less than one additional trip every two minutes on the driveway and as they go north and south of there or distribute quickly along the network, there'll be very low traffic volume increases. So when we measure that according to standard traffic engineering practice, all of the intersections operate at level of service A and B, which is excellent because these are low volume rows and because the, the project is adding a, a small amount of traffic. The other measure we looked at, which is really a qualitative assessment, is just daily traffic volumes based on kind of a livability assessment. And we concluded based on the most recent addendum that from a quality of life standpoint, the daily traffic volumes equate to a good or excellent quality of life. And then I guess finally, we recognize it's not just cars. It's there are people walking and bicycling on these roads and the original study identified the potential for some warning signs and regulatory signs to help with motorists awareness that there will be pedestrians and bicycles in the area and let pedestrians know that they should be walking on the left facing traffic. So we believe, we still believe that the signs would be a good measure here if the, if that's something that the town wanted. That was identified in our letter as something that the applicant would be willing to do. So that's really the summary of the traffic assessment. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Michael, should I just, should we just go through the?
Well, at this point, any, any, any planning board members who have questions about the specifics, I think, would be appropriate. I, we open it up to the public. I want to allow everyone to be able to speak, but to have a full understanding of what's been presented.
Okay, so I'd like to, we still have a couple more consultants that I'd like to just briefly discuss your, their, their aspect of the project. So is, is Tom Cusack in the, in the queue?
Yes, I am. Yes, good evening, good evening, everybody. I'm Tom Cusack. I was involved with the water supply development of the project. And and as Mark had indicated earlier, we are going to, the plan is to utilize the existing water supply sources onsite, which consists of wells one, two, and three. Wells one and two had been historically in service to meet the water demands of the prior use. Well, three was a well that was drilled but never incorporated. To summarize, the water demands of the project are approximately 12.9 GPM. The regulatory agencies require that a project meet twice the average water demand with the best well out of service. So if you want to consider twice the average water demand, that water demand is 25.8 GPM. In July of 2020, we tested the best well. Again, it's twice the average water demand with the best well out of service. The best well was tested in, in July of 2020 and it demonstrated a yield of 32 GPM, which is certainly more than adequate to meet twice the average water demand of 25.8 GPM. We subsequently tried to execute tests on the existing wells, wells one and two, due to the fact that the wells had been out of service for quite some time. And the performance, we basically decided to do a well redevelopment program on the wells. And subsequently, the wells were retested in January of, of 2021. And wells one and, and two were pumped at 8.4 and 19.5 GPM respectively for a combined yield of 27.9. Again, meeting the water demand requirement of 25.8. Again, demonstrating that we could meet twice the average water demand with the best well out. During both pump tests programs, we did an offset well monitoring program. And it should be noted that there were no offset impacts determined in the offset monitoring wells. And in addition, finally, the water quality samples that were collected demonstrate that the water meets New York State drinking water standards.
Thank you, Tom. Jim, I'd like to, is, is Matt Rittercroft also in the queue? Briefly.
I, I'm here, but I would rather have Kathleen Bakewell talk. I believe the citizens, neighbors, the board members have heard the material about the other aspects of the environment review that you haven't covered, Mark, and
Okay.
Concerned the natural resources and, and some of the other matters. And since the landscape architectural components of the design are so integral to many of the board's concerns and some of the, many of the neighbors' concerns, I'd be good just to go to Kathleen.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Kathleen?
Yes, thank you. Hello, everyone. Could I have the first slide that I submitted? It's the aerial of the manor house that, on the site. Is that possible? So while that's coming up, I'd like to just mention a few things that the owners have focused on in terms of the landscape design for the site. And one is to create a rich ambience for the project. Another is to protect the natural resources. And a third one is to really respect the cultural legacy of the place, respecting the principles of the town as well as following the guidelines of agencies such as the Office for Parks Recreation and Historical Preservation and the National Park Service. So if the, the first slide that I'm hoping to show is something we're proposing to do west of the manor house, which is to selectively remove some of the vegetation at the forest edge so that we can show, so we can reveal the, the vista to the western horizon. Over time, that, that, that view has been obscured and we would like to to just do a very modest amount of removal vegetation to reveal it. And why do we think this is important? Well, first of all, it's magnificent view, but also this is in keeping with the historical landscape legacy of, of, of the Hudson River Valley. This site was designed at, at the time of the picturesque movement and a quintessential part of the picturesque movement was the the creation of magnificent vistas. And Alana, which you're probably familiar with, is, is a prime example of that, but they're all up and down the valley. And Alana was, had magnificent views. Over time, they became obscured. And then the past few years, with the Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation, they went through an extensive restoration of those views. So our, our project is of course much more modest than that. But we, we do want to at least recapture that view. That's not what I was hoping to see, but I'll continue on.
The technology is failing me at the moment, but I'm working on it.
Okay, I'll just, yeah. That's fine. So I also wanted to mention that if, that just a few months ago, the Hudson River Estuary Program issued a, a guide of over 100 pages promoting the creation and preservation of views. So it's really seen throughout the valley as something that's part of the cherished landscape. And, and in that guide, they, they put forth a very detailed guidelines for how to do it in, in a very sensitive way. So of course, we're incorporating that in, in, in our thinking. So the, the, the fourth slide that, that it would be great to see, but I can describe it is what, what we're talking about with that, that selective thinning of the vegetation is we took a site section from the manor house down to the, the nearest residence below. And we looked at what that looked like in terms of the existing forest screening and what it would mean in terms of the, the thinning. And it's just sort of a, a, a very small part of the forest edge and just the upper level of that, that we would want to remove some of the vegetation and we would leave any cuttings and any, remove any cut vegetation on the ground so it could decompose and become part of the woodland habitat. So if, if those slides come up, we can maybe briefly run through them. The, the next thing I want to discuss is the carriage house area. And that is the area that you may have seen on the plan that Mark was showing that is where a lot of the development is happening. The carriage house also has this magnificent stone rock wall at the north side of it. And we will be, of course, preserving that and then looking for ways to reveal its beauty the way we shape the landscapes.
Kathleen, are these the files? Is this the file?
I have, let's see, now I don't see. I just see a gallery of all the faces. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me share it.
There we go.
Yeah, that's, that's the site section I was referring to. So just to stay on this for a moment. I don't know if people need the reference of where this is. If they do, we can go back to slide one, but if not, we'll just carry on from here. So that area marked in yellow is showing that if there's, if there are tall branches and there are some or, or trees that are small saplings but may over time become very tall, we'd want to take those out now and just kind of manage that one edge so that that sightline, which is shown by that horizontal line is, is retained. And then that slanted line, which is the screening line we want to retain, is, is managed. So just upper part of the forest, not the lower part. So we have still retained a really good visual screening. Yeah, if we can move on to the next slide, that would be great. And that just gives a, a, an idea of what we're talking about. We're not talking about drastic changes. If you look at the image above, that's sort of a concealed view and then below it's opened up by, by just very careful management of, of the vegetation. Okay, next slide, please. And this is an overall, the overall site plan, and just to give you context, it's that middle area that we're going to look at more closely. And if you want, just go quickly, go ahead to the next slide. I have a close up of that area. So the yellow, yellow building is carriage house I was just mentioning with the beautiful rock wall to the north of it. And then to the south of it, we have a meadow that is defined by the, the carriage house at the north and then a, an informal woodland edge all around the rest of the perimeter. So and then in the middle, it's a meadow, which was formerly agricultural fields. So our proposal is to retain that wood, a woodland edge. It's a soft informal woodland edge and incorporate the new buildings within that edge and then add back in vegetation that is consistent with the upland hardwood forest and use that vegetation to continue to screen the new units in strategic ways. So we really play with that vegetation to continue to, to define and that, that central meadow, which is about four and a half acres of the scheme and, and to also retain that character of the meadow with, with an edge. Then at the bottom of the screen, the two units, they're, they are clusters, number one and number two. Where you can see that they're, we're showing vegetation on the east side, which is at the lower part of the slide. And we're also going to add in, because we have the opportunity to do so in this location, some wet meadow species because it's near the wet meadow. And then this way we can get a very dense, very species rich kind of edge there. And that really enhances the biodiversity just by having those two different ecosystem types kind of joined together in, in, in that one scene there. It would be, oh, you know, the, the, the red square is an existing, is a, is a 1970s maintenance shed, which we will be removing. And because it's, it will leave behind in its footprint a somewhat disturbed site, it's a really terrific opportunity to have a little bit of parking associated with the carriage house, but not directly in front of the carriage house. And again, we will have, that will be kind of surrounded by the, the woodland plantings that we're proposing. The final slide is showing, so just to give you some feel for the, the, the design intent for the landscape, this is a conceptual illustration to show that we, we're, we really plan to bring the woodland up close to the units and then have meadow grasses in the open space and then leave in front of the units, little small areas where people can have small gardens. But you get, you can see that it's really enveloped by, by the woodland ecosystem. And then to the right, these are just some of the plants we're proposing. We have a very extensive plant list, but you can see it's quite beautiful. There's a wide variety will be, you know, actually enhancing the diversity of, of plantings on the site with, with these plants. And all of them are native species. So that's my final slide and just want to thank you for your time.
Kathleen, this is a quick question asking if you could just identify yourself. Kathleen, this is a quick question, asking if you could just identify yourself and.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. I'm Kathleen Bakewell and I'm the landscape architect on the project.
Thank you.
Matt, anything to add?
No, I want to hear from the neighbors.
Well, I think first, I thought I'd open it up to members of the planning board. Any questions or comments that they might have at this moment? Okay, hearing none.
Real quick.
Open it up to the pub. Yes, Sean.
Sorry about that.
Yes.
Do we have an idea? You know, when thinking about all these trees coming in and all the construction that's going to happen at the site, do we have an idea of how long of an interruption that people that live on Acker Hook, which is a quite quiet country road? How long this would take and what that impact looks like?
Mark or Matt, could you answer that?
Well, I mean, obviously, the, you know, part of the, there'll be some phasing involved in, you know, construction of the project. And so, you know, for the exact timeframe, difficult to estimate at this time. Just obviously start up, you know, certain infrastructure needs to be developed first to be able to support the unit. Charlie, are you on the?
Yeah, I would have to say that most of the heavy construction, which really has to do with the roads and putting the infrastructure in, would probably take around a year. Then after that, depending on, you know, then after that, it'll be building these. You know, in the meantime, we're renovating all the historic properties as well, as well as building one of the newer construction pieces of one of the clusters. And then I would say, you know, maybe another year or a year and a half for the rest. But that would be like much less impactful construction. So it'd be smaller crews just finishing those, you know, building those other clusters. So the big, the big heavier types of construction would be the first year.
Sean, that's Charles Blakeman, developer for the project.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I guess I just want to share my concerns about the size of the vehicles. I don't know if any of you have ever driven down Acker Hook. It barely fits a large SUV on it. So just kind of thinking through that and access might, with this particular project, might be better off an IG. I don't know, but thinking through it's, I regularly deal with a large truck with a trailer running me off the road on Acker Hook already. So just a concern to share.
Thank you, Sean. Other planning board members have a question or comment at this point? Kathy, did you have something or?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, okay, we'd like to open it up to the public, I think. What Jim would like you to do is through the chat box, say you'd like to be recognized so he can unmute you. And I guess because I know there are a lot of people who would like to speak. If you've heard a certain position brought up once or twice, please don't feel you need to also repeat it. We know there's a lot of concern and appreciate that. We also want to give everyone a chance to make sure that every different issue is identified and is spoken to tonight so that we have it on record. So if that sounds good to you, Jim, from a way to do this, please, we'll open it up to the public now for questions and comments.
Right, so if you'd like to speak, please let me know in the chat box. And that way, we can get everybody in an orderly fashion without talking over one another. Michael, I do have two questions that were actually typed in here earlier that I thought I'd raise. I think they're kind of general questions. First one was how many families would be living in the complex? So I guess that would go to the size of the structures and who we anticipate living there. I don't know who wants to take that.
Charles Blakeman is 36 units, so 36 families.
Okay, thank you. I did have two others. Someone was asking if elevation and renderings are available.
Yes, there are some available.
And then you did answer the question about the timeline already. So we have taken care of that. One other question was, do you have any designs of the condominiums?
Yes.
The answer is yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Again, just want to put it out there publicly. All right, so then starting, you know, in the order of which I've received requests. The first request to speak was from attorney Wayne Thompson. If you could unmute yourself. If you're still here.
Can you hear me? I am here.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Wayne Thompson, 17 Hasbrook Drive, Poughkeepsie. I represent a bunch of the residents and neighbors. And I thank the board for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I have some prepared comments and I want to try and get right through it so that the rest of the people can comment. I'd like to start with an observation that there are times when plans are presented to planning boards that are truly remarkable in their sense of design and striking in their presentation. However, I think from the neighbor's standpoint, this is not one of them. And as I've stated in my memos, what we're dealing with here in this project is a subdivision. In its simplest form, it's a subdivision of a parcel of land into three smaller parcels under the guise of adaptive reuse so that the developer can leverage various density allowances in the code to maximize the number of condominium units he can build. Developer maintains that the subdivision is required to undertake this adaptive reuse. And without this subdivision, the adaptive reuse can't happen. That proposition runs contrary to the intent of the zoning and comprehensive plan. And it's not even consistent with other aspects of code enforcement. For example, if someone came to the planning board to put an addition on their home and was told, well, you also need to upgrade your plumbing and you'll need to upgrade the electric service coming to your house before you can even begin, a homeowner would say, well, that's rather expensive. I don't think I could do that. That makes the project unaffordable. To which the code enforcement officer would surely reply, "Cost of compliance is not a consideration in granting of a building permit. It's your problem to pay to comply with the code." I think the same should be applied to this development. The cost of compliance should not be borne by the residents that surround the project merely because he wants to use the residential development, the condominium complex, to pay for other aspects of the project. The specter of adaptive reuse, while worthy, is not really the responsibility of the neighbors on a winding country road to bear the responsibility, the financial costs of the adaptive reuse. The no benefit directly inures to the public for this proposition. While those that purchased the condominium units within the project may appreciate the work that's being done, the residents of Acker Hook Road surely receive no benefit from the project and are stuck with the unpleasant trees of the project from construction to post-construction with various traffic issues and other issues, quality of life issues that will, I'm sure, be discussed. The special permit use application is not merely an as-of-right application. Mr. Graminsky said that the zoning code allows four units. Well, there's that provision within the zoning code where four units could be put in based on the merits and circumstances of the project. We now have three separate parcels, which is three separate projects, each one independent of each other. Each one may have its own unique merits and circumstances that might be worthy of the granting of a special use permit. But 125 acres of undeveloped land certainly does not merit adaptive reuse. I don't know what adaptive reuse there can be on land that's never been developed before. And in my previous memos, I've stated that the town's comprehensive plan never envisioned this type of density. It didn't provide any standards in the RC 5 district for such a special use permit. But what the comprehensive plan did detail is that they wanted to preserve the rural character of the town and avoid traffic congestion and sprawl. This goes contrary to the stated goals of the comprehensive plan. It's the planning board's job as gatekeeper to the zoning code to determine what the merits and circumstances are of this project that would warrant the granting of such an immense density increase. And as of right, conventional subdivision would allow 13 units on the 65 buildable, net buildable acres. Or you could do some clustering and wind up with about 17 units on a conventional subdivision. That's as of right. The application is not for an as-of-right application. This is in exchange for, and I fail to see what the benefit is to the residents of Acker Hook, Acker Hook Road, or the general citizenry of the town by allowing the density to proceed as the developer has proposed. I'm sure there are a lot of other people that would like to speak. As I've done in the past, if I have any further comments, I will submit them to the board in writing. I thank you very kindly for allowing me the time to speak tonight.
Thank you.
Great. All right, Michael, next speaker in the queue is Eli, I believe. Eli's iPhone.
I think it's Eli.
Okay, here.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
I apologize.
Can you see me or hear me?
Yes, can you identify yourself and let us know where you live and be free to?
Yes, I'm Eli Nathan. I live on 47 Hagerty Hill Road, which is the intersection of Hagerty Hill and Primrose Hill. Can you all hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so obviously, we have a lot to say, so I'll be quick. I wanted to, first of all, support the prior person's comments. I agree wholeheartedly with all those comments, especially the idea of us not having a gated community in the center of our already established community. But my main concern is that we're talking about, you know, a sudden influx of all these people living here and doubling the traffic on this road. And, you know, I'm not too keen on that, but I understand that that's progress. But my big concern is that here's 36 new homes. A bunch of people who are going to be living there part-time, who are going to be wanting their B and B. And suddenly, we're going to be having a whole rotation of different families every week and weekend coming in and out of this neighborhood, which people are not going to be familiar with the fact that we have, you know, horses on the road and people walking, you know, but we don't have shoulders really on these roads. And I don't feel like a sign is really going to make a difference to a New York City driver who's blowing through here. But also, there's the issue of crime. I mean, how do we know what kind of people are becoming in and out of the neighborhood through these Airbnb issues? Is there a way that we can prohibit people who purchase these properties from using Airbnb for a certain period of time?
Eli.
I can keep my question off the air.
I was just going to point out that Airbnb is, it's a very active conversation for the town who is trying to prohibit it altogether. So there, as far as I know, also, there just wouldn't be, they wouldn't be allowed to do that. Whether people, rules, I can't guarantee it, but they shouldn't be allowed to do that.
Oh, okay. That's good. That's comforting.
Let me comment. Airbnb is not legal use in the town at this time.
I didn't know that.
I didn't either.
Let me also comment that there will be bylaws.
Could I just, could I just ask Jim to confirm that comment that I made? It is not, it is not in the zoning code and it is not an allowed use.
That is correct, Melody. Currently, it is not permitted within the town by code.
So my point, my point is people who are engaging in Airbnb are not acting legally within the zoning code just to dissuade people of the feeling that this would be allowed here. It is not a legal use.
Are we technically in this town out here? I mean, does it apply to us in the periphery?
What I just said is not a legal use in the town. And I don't think there's any proposal before us that would ask for that to be allowed in this application.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Jim and Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I'm stating the facts correctly.
It is not, it is not a legal use in the town now. And generally, developments such as this have homeowners associations. And the rules that they have are such that they do not allow short-term rentals like that. They don't want it within their own community. But right now, it's not legal for B and Bs to function in the town of Rhinebeck. We know they're a great lady here. It becomes an enforcement issue. And right now, the town is trying to sort out exactly what to do with that. But right as of now, it is not a legal use in the town of Rhinebeck.
Let me go.
Is there going to be a homeowners in this condo complex? I thought I remember something saying there wasn't a homeowners association.
What, could I go back just a minute? I'm sorry, Joe, to.
Go ahead. Sorry.
Reinforce something because Michael said B and B. B and B operate.
I'm sorry, no, I meant, I'm sorry, I meant Airbnb.
I know you do.
Short-term rental.
That's what I wanted to confirm. B and B bed and breakfast operations are regulated separately and quite clearly in the zoning code and through other rules and regulations. They are different from Airbnb. And Airbnb is not currently an authorized use in the town. B and Bs are if they follow the health department and other regulations. So I just want people to keep them separately in their mind. But as far as I know, there is nothing in the application before us that suggests that either of those operations would take place on this property. And indeed, we have talked to the applicant about the risk of these condominium units being used for Airbnb and been assured and will pursue that, that such is not the intent of the application.
And this is Charles Blakeman. Just to confirm, there is going to be a very strict homeowners association with condo rules that will not allow short-term rentals and will be very, and will be responsible for making sure that that doesn't happen.
I don't believe any of this.
Joe, did you have a question?
All I was, I was just going to say, just in regards to being in real estate and watching this happen in various places, the best way, as I think Charles just suggested, is that if there's, if there's code within that. The best way, as, as I think Charles just suggested, is that if there's, if there's code within that that subdivision or that development or whatever that and it's enforced there, it's the best way to handle it because it's being enforced on a small basis. So if it, if it doesn't allow it, it would, you know, take it off the town's hands as well.
You're talking about it being in a homeowners association?
Yeah, that you can, that it's not permissible because the town, right, it's not legal, but then you have an enforcement issue. And when you have a homeowners association that's saying it's illegal and it's enforced, then people don't do it. I mean, just factually, you see people not do it in those areas, even if they try to push limits in other spots. So.
Thank you. Sorry, go ahead, Michael.
No, I just wanted to thank Elise for the clarification.
Next in the queue, we did have a question and Gretchen, I may go to you to this. There's a question about how people can see, I guess, see all these files, the proposed designs and things like that.
They are all on the town website.
On the planning board webpage?
On the planning board webpage under the public hearings.
Yep. Thank you. So you can access all the files there. Then there was an additional question about how we got to 36 units being considered, given the density allowed in RC five. So Mark, I don't know if you want to talk about the adaptive reuse and how this has all worked?
Sure. Sure, Jim. So, so the, and actually, and Matt Rudikoff can also speak to it also. But under the RC, RC five, in the RC five zoning district, there is a specific formula for determining net density for, for establishment of a unit count. And that was it was strictly enforced in developing the unit count for this. And so just, just briefly, the, you know, the, the net density calculation excludes wetlands, wetland adjacent areas and slopes greater than 25%. And so those, that was specifically detailed in, in development of this, of this project. And precisely measured utilizing the existing, you know, boundary and topographic survey, location, field location of all the wetland and wetland adjacent areas. And also utilizing the topography that was developed through aerial survey for for determination of slopes greater than 25%. And so that along with and so that, that formula was used to develop a unit count. And then establishment of the, the two, and so I'll say that's lot number three. That's where the new condominium units are located. Lots one and two were also established utilizing the specific zoning code requirements for establishment of a buildable lot. Providing adequate required setbacks, side rear and front yard setbacks for, for lots and also other sections of the code relative to wetland and wet, and wet areas. So that with, you know, without getting into more detail of it, I mean, both various sections of the code that are very specific on how you establish that density account. They were utilized and presented, you know, in previous, in previous meetings and documents to the town.
Thank you, Mark. And we're getting a number of questions asking where the information is available. So I just want to reiterate what Gretchen mentioned a minute ago. All submitted files are available on the town's website, on the planning board webpage. There's a link there for this project and honestly, every project that comes before the planning board for each month. Ruben, I believe you have a question about construction traffic. Like the mute your line.
Yes. Hi, thank you for taking my question. Just to piggyback on the construction period, would like to request that a stipulation be put in that no major hauling or major deliveries be made up Hagerty Hill Road in the respect that site distances are poor and the condition of the road as exists is pretty poor. Is that something that the planning board could consider?
You're here.
Hello?
I was agreeing, sorry.
Is that something that the planning board could consider putting his in as a stipulation?
I, I think I'm speaking for myself, but I think as we review the plan and move forward, we can look at how construction traffic will be moderated and how we can move that through. So thank you for raising that question.
Okay, thank you.
Stephen Basson, do you have a question?
Yeah, my question is, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I have some background in traffic studies going back some years. First of all, as a developer and as a consultant and a traffic study is done by people who are hired by a developer, their job is to make sure the developer gets what he wants. But in a quick look at this study or a quick look at these roads, I, I think I'm correct in saying that Primrose Hill was a county road. And Ackard Hook is not a county road. And at the point where Hagerty Hill and Primrose Hill meet and/or at the point where Ackard Hook Extension and Primrose Hill meet are ideal sites for a traffic circle. They would have tremendous benefits for slowing down traffic in general. And the problem with Hagerty Road and Primrose Hill anyway, it's a perfect site for a, a circle which would then go into the project, but they'd have to, it'd have to be, it'd be a new road. It would have to be put in by the developer and probably a traffic circle with the cooperation of the county would have to be done correctly, but it's advantage to the county as well. Because it, what it does is slow down, it slows down traffic from nine and nine G. It also means that all construction traffic, and I'm not talking about 36, you know, Subarus coming in on the week, the week or the weekend. I'm talking about major construction, not just for the, the project facilities, which are historical, but for the private houses for years. As each house is built, there'll be more and more construction vehicles coming in. Those would be ideal sites and safe sites for people to come in at a slow pace and get into the facility. It would also protect Ackard Hook, which is known, and Hacker Hook leads into Fly and Burger, which are also the main, probably the main roads in our part of town for joggers, bicyclists and walkers and horses for that matter, the pony, the pony league and all of that stuff. They really don't really, are not suited to have any large vehicles coming in through that part, plus the increased traffic. It makes much more sense for the traffic to come in from nine and nine G. And certainly for construction cups to come in. And if that is in fact, the county road, that's why it's there. It's supposed to be used for all facilities for the community, not the, not the local, not the local roads that are just residential. And for three or four years, not two years, not one year, but maybe three or four years or maybe longer, you're going to have construction traffic of large trucks bringing in material excavation trucks, concrete trucks, logs, whatever else you have are going to be coming in there by the dozens on a daily basis, not just on weekends, but on, and probably less on weekends, but on a daily basis, they'll be coming through a rural, a rural town road, a rural community and their rural roads. So I really can't see how that's not been looked at by the, not even mentioned, or maybe it was mentioned and I haven't read the thing correctly, by the traffic consultant. That's, it's, it's, it's done in almost every rural community and other parts of the world. Why we wouldn't do it, I have absolutely no idea. It's so simple and makes the most sense. Traffic wise and traffic and, and traffic flow wise, and it also slows down traffic, which is a tremendous advantage.
Thank you.
That's my, that's my main point. I have other points also, but I would stick to that being for my, in my, in my, and I, I live on right off Ackard Hook and Fly. The second house off that corner. Now I've seen trucks coming down that road would not be advantageous. It's really just not the right place for it.
Thank you.
Thank.
I'm sorry, Stephen, you have something, you have something else you want to mute?
I was, I was just going to say, all of the stuff, the cosmetic stuff within the facility is meant for the facility itself. We're not going to see it. It's not a big deal. What is a big deal is the cars coming in and out and their effect on children, vehicles, horses, bicycles and human beings who walk through, walk and use the roads for all kinds of use and just for local traffic. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Cornelia Gallow. Like unmute your line?
Thank you, Jim. I'm going to second what Stephen has said about the traffic. I would challenge the traffic study unless they're including the said walkers, bicyclists and horses in the count. Friday afternoon, when there was a tree down at nine and we did a bypass, yes, there are 200 cars that go down this road a day, but normally I do not see 200 cars a day. I think the traffic circle in the Hagerty Hill intersection would be an interesting option. The southwest unit is only 250 feet from that area. And there is a utility, I'm going to say path because it's not a road that is there already. And I just, I feel like if going to Wayne's point early on, that this topography suits about 17 houses, I think if we were having a conversation about 20 units, we would be having a very different positive conversation. And I think we should keep that in mind moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Linda Kagan. Just unmute your line.
Thank you. Sorry, it took me a moment to find that. So I moved here just a little under two years ago and I, you know, like everyone else, I think who, who already lives here. You know, really came for the uniqueness of the area, the RC five zoning. The ability to utilize Ackard Hook as a country road for walks and dogs and horses and other, you know, important characters in our lives. And my understanding of the town comprehensive plan is just so important. And I really appreciate the planning boards, you know, really representing the needs of, of the Reinbeck and certainly of our area in maintaining the goals of the town comprehensive plan. My, you know, biggest concern is that Ackard Hook is being very, you know, used in a very cavalier way by the way in which the developer is considering its use without understanding the importance of the goals of the town comprehensive plan. And also the residents and the people who've invested probably maybe the most significant amount of their financial, you know, wealth in purchasing land and utilizing it and enjoying it with, with their families. Never with the understanding or you know, belief that development like this could be included in such a beautiful, quiet rural district. So I'm very concerned about the safety issues. Someone else mentioned, you know, increase in crime. I think that there are so many other factors and we really need independent reports and folks who really have the skill set to provide the expertise to provide us with an understanding of not simply the developer's point of view and not even simply, you know, the owners who live on Ackard Hook and in the area. But someone, you know, experts who can really provide a comprehensive understanding of, does this work? And I think Cornelia obviously mentioned that the size and entrance and, you know, to the facilities whenever, you know, it's agreed upon should certainly, you know, use that circular drive, should certainly use a county road. Ackard is unmarked. It's very challenging even for two relatively, you know, medium sized cars to, to pass each other in opposite directions. I can't imagine what heavy trucks for two to four years at a minimum would cause for in terms of noise, pollution and disruption as well as undermining the road itself. So it makes complete sense to use the county road. And I really look forward to the planning board utilizing the town comprehensive plan to maintain the quality of our lives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Looks like. Sorry for pronouncing wrong, mate. Kel.
Chauk Tureye.
Joe, sorry. Yep, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for taking my comments. I'm a neighbor. I live on the west side. I think it's the west side of the development. A few years ago, I attended a meeting where the owner showed us beautiful individual houses that were going to be built on that site. This evening, I am a little troubled to say the least to hear that we will have 36 condominiums on that project. I live here part time. I enjoy walking on Ackard Hook. I cannot see, cannot imagine the traffic. And I'm extremely concerned that there will be 36 condominium on that beautiful piece of land. So just what, wanted to share my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Matthew McGuire. Matthew, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you. Hello, and thank you for listening. I live at Ackard Hook and Kipsburg and Drive. And I find Wayne Thompson's analysis absolutely persuasive. I find the adaptive reuse request is unpersuasive. I walk Ackard Hook Road and I feel strongly that a 36 unit subdivision will compromise the RC five zoning. I also want to say that I second Sean Jones's observation of being run off the road on Ackard Hook by large trucks. It's, it's rather common. So that's the end of my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, a couple more speakers. Greg Robinson, object, unmute your line.
Hi, thank you. Greg Robinson, live on five Cricket Lane. I had a question about the sight lines and the trees that were being cleared. On the, the map here, it has the, it just for the manor house, but there's three other buildings that are west facing towards the river. Is there any plans to do to have any tree cutting for those or just for the manor house?
I, I can take that at presence just for the manor house. That's on a very high point and it's, it's a specific view that we're trying to restore.
Okay, saying at present makes me a little nervous.
Are we talking about the carriage house and the other building that would be down by the road doing housing?
From the, the map that's up there, it looks like there's three, three separate units on the
Right.
western side. So I was.
Western side, on the western side. I'm only thinking of the manor house and the carriage barn as being on the western side. Am I missing something?
There. There. I'm assuming those are three different housing units.
Up here?
Yeah, so it's units five, six, and seven, Melody.
Okay, all right, but you're not proposing clearing of vistas or view sheds from those, are you?
No.
It's just clear.
The only, the only view shed restoration would be from the manor house itself.
That's correct.
Okay, I just had one other comment regarding the Airbnb. It may be against the rules in Rhinebeck, but a quick search and I found 24 or 24 or more different houses that were up, up on Airbnb in Rhinebeck for right now, so.
You're absolutely right. You're right. They're there. It's a matter of enforcement, but they are currently operating illegally.
Okay.
So that's, that's a different problem that has to be resolved or, or issue. Let me not, let me not put it in terms of a problem. Right now, it is not legal use in Rhinebeck. Are they up on the website? Yes, they are. So that's a different issue to be resolved. So if anything in this proposal suggested that was going to happen, it would be suggesting it illegally. Correct me if I'm wrong, everybody, but that's the way I see it.
That's correct, Melody.
Just to, and Jim, again, correct me if I'm wrong, just to touch on this a little bit more further from what I said before. That's why with the HOA having language specifically prohibiting this in this or any neighborhood protects, protects that area from not having Airbnbs more because the general township is working towards creating language that makes it more substantiated and enforceable, but currently it's not permissible, but the language enforceability is not quite there, which is why this would have another layer of protection.
She's absolutely correct.
Yes.
Just want to make the distinction that just because something happens doesn't mean it's legal. We all know that, right? Across various spectrums of our life, the fact that it's happening in Rhinebeck doesn't make it legal and certainly would not allow these people in their project to do that.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, would you unmute your line?
Hi, Dave Weiner. I live at 306 Acro Road. I'm a little bit north of this development, but I'm not considered a neighbor, so I never get notified about this. I just have, I just want to second everything everybody else has said and just make a, highlight a couple of points. I sent you a five-page memo. When, when the community got together and there was a lot of input, the, the result of that was, in the general purposes of the code, it says to achieve social, economic, and cultural diversity within the community and to prevent the establishment of any gated residential development that is not fully integrated with the community. This is essentially a gated private subdivision, which is completely counter to the rural nature of our neighborhood. And speaking to that, how would, how would I, if I'm disadvantaged by Airbnb types speeding down my road, if I can't even go knock on the door and find out if people who live there own the place or renters or Airbnbers? So the fact that the folks who live there might be able to enforce it, I can't. And you're suggesting to me that, that this will be enforced. Well, do the enforcement first, then, then let's talk about this plan. Secondly, the traffic. Currently, the traffic regulations are not enforced on Acro Hook Road. I bike on the road, I walk on the road, and I drive on the road. And I am frequently, let's say, upset by people zooming by, and the fact that this traffic study suggests that a couple of signs are going to do anything about that is absurd. You need an independent review of this. In addition to traffic circles, I think we need to probably do, and I'm not an expert on this, but it seems logical if you're going to dump all this extra traffic on that road, that you need some traffic humps that, as they, as they did in Red Hook on our River Drive. I know it's getting late, so I'll stop at this point. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Oh, one last point I'd like to make. Regarding the entrance, the, the entrance onto Acro Hook, they talk about sightlines, but the minute you get on Acro Hook, when you go south, you run into the intersection at Acro Hook and the Acro Hook extension. It's a very, it's at an acute angle, and the sightlines are terrible there. So the logic doesn't follow. Also, I've identified in, in my monologue, you several pinch points in the lack of specific places where there just is no place to get out of the way when there's more traffic, even whether you're walking or on a bike. Thank you so much.
Thank you. One more speaker, Robert Strickstein. Did you unmute your line?
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity for concerned neighbors to be able to speak. I want to just address one, one issue that's very dear to me. I'm Robert Strickstein. I live at One Troy Drive, so I'm on the far western, directly adjacent to the development. I'd like to address the clear cutting as proposed of 10,000 square feet of the forest to enhance the views from the manor house. This item appeared relatively recently, relatively, it's been a long haul, at the November 18th, 2019 submission, and this comes as a quote, as a suggestion from Charles Bernbaum. Prior to this submission, no one had ever spoke of view sheds and restoring historic landscapes in this way. In fact, at previous hearings, the developers have represented that clear cutting would be limited to construction areas only. So this is a contradiction in a previous representation. Specifically, the study submitted is inadequate. It only addresses direct sightlines. It doesn't address forest density or privacy screening, seasonal changes in the forest, or any kind of habitat compromise. We have a lot of resident habitat back there, nesting owls, two herds of deer, a herd of turkeys. They all move through this area with real regularity. So for those of us who live directly adjacent to the woodland, day in and day out, season after seizing, clear cutting is just a complete affront to our tranquility in the sense of well-being for the benefit of very few owners. You speak of creating, and I'm quoting from this evening, magnificent views, but that's for very few people, as far as I can tell, and pays little heed to the enjoyment of the neighbors of the rest of the community. The other issue I'd like to see the developers address and the board address in more detail is night sky compliant lighting. Again, this is another issue of the forest quality of life. They have submitted details confirming night sky fixtures, but we need to understand how they function. Are they motion activated by use? Are they set to timers? Will the forest light up each night even if no one's in residence? There also needs to be confirmation that their units won't have any type of flood or broad-based exterior lighting. So we really need to see more detailed information about that, and I'd love to see the developers do a presentation on the subject of night sky compliance. I support all of the issues my neighbors are raising with concerns to traffic, and we will get in in more detail, hopefully with independent consultants on wastewater and groundwater usage. There's one area though where I digress from some of my Acro Hook Road neighbors. So I bring it to the board's attention that I think introducing Hagerty Hill Road as an access point for this development would be a disaster. If you've driven Hagerty Hill Road, you understand what I mean. It's already the shortcut for many folks and tradespeople between, you know, 9G and 9, and to do anything that might introduce an increase in that very tricky road, I think would just be a long-term problem that the town would find difficult to solve. Again, I thank everybody for their time and their diligence in respect to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we actually have a couple more? Langto, if you'd like to unmute your line?
Hello, I'll try to be brief. This is Patty Langto. I live on Vli Road in the house that my husband grew up in. I have a bunch of concerns. I'd like to echo my appreciation for the recommendation made by Steve Basson to explore a county road as the main entrance to this development. I think it warrants some investigation. The three things that are, really jump out at me are the traffic that's gotten a lot of attention this evening. Also, the, the source for groundwater, for fresh water, which seems to be addressed with the existing wells on the development plan. Also, the thing that I don't think is getting enough attention is the wastewater treatment. We live adjacent to the Fallsburg Creek, and we have a very shallow well that is not far from this, what has become a year-round creek, and the output of the effluent for this development, for the 36 unit, flows from the wastewater treatment directly into the Fallsburg Creek. And it just seems that in this day and age when freshwater is becoming such a concern for everyone, and there is a great deal of concern about wetlands, that we didn't hear from an expert tonight about how this wastewater treatment plan is going to operate. It's been my experience since I have lived here, when Daytop was active, that the wastewater treatment plant did not operate correctly. It was a source of terrible smell that came out of the creek when it was flowing. So, so I am very concerned about the, what's happening with the wastewater coming out of the treatment plant and what will happen when things don't go according to plan. I understand that it's going to be monitored, but the answer that I'm not getting is what happens when it falls outside of the monitoring parameters, you know, how, what happens? Does everybody move out of the development when you can't use the wastewater treatment plant anymore? I doubt that that's the answer. So I, I'm hoping that the planning board will really put a lot of attention to our, to the wastewater treatment plant. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
All right, Mark or Seth, there was a question related to the speaker we just had, asking if we could kind of show a line where the wastewater plant flows into the Fallsburg Creek. I don't think you can kind of explain it using what we have up here, and I can just use the arrow.
It's right here.
I can't, I can't see your arrow, Mark.
Oh, can you see mine?
No.
Yes, yes, I see it down at the bottom.
Yeah, you're on, that's, that's the wastewater treatment plant where you are, Jim. And then, and to the south, you see the line that goes to the south. There, yes, and there's an angle point.
Yep.
There, right there, that angle point, that's a discharge at Acro Hook Road. Right there. That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's actually, there's a sign because it's all the wastewater discharge and treatment facility is, will be monitored by New York State Health Department, New York State DEC. And what I didn't bring up is that both the water, water treatment, water supply, water treatment, and wastewater treatment facilities will be operated by Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. The owner applicant has already entered into agreement with Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority to turn over, once the, the both facilities have been designed, finally designed and approved by regulatory agencies, and then ultimately constructed, they will be owned and oper, they will be operated by Dutchess County Water and Wastewater.
Thanks, Mark. Well, while we're on it, there's just another question about where the creek is and which direction it flows. Is this the creek, the dotted line here going under Acro Hook?
Yeah, so, yeah, so outflows, outflows to the east.
Correct.
Down, down, yeah, north is to the right, yeah, I've got it rotated 90 degrees.
Right.
Yeah.
So flows east, east and then north.
Okay.
Over and under Vli Road, it goes into a pond on Vli Road, under Vli Road, then loops around by Kipsburg and then back through across Acro Hook, just south of the Vli Acro intersection, and then goes down into the Great Swamp. That's to the south on, as Acro Hook goes back to nine.
I think we answered the other question about the operator. You just covered that one, Mark.
Can I just ask a quick question about this map? Where is that utility pathway that somebody mentioned?
I don't, I'm not sure where that is, Mark, you'd have to.
Yeah, so if you go, if you go to the intersection of Hagerty Hill, Primrose, and, and.
Right.
Yeah, right there. Okay, so at that, near, just a little bit to the west of that, there is a there are a series of utility poles, and so.
Yes.
In that location, there was underground, there was underground, I'll just say utilities. I'm assuming, I know it's power, I don't know if telecommunication comes in there also, but there's a, there was just a, that, that's from, from there to the woods, to the manor house is how, how the underground utilities were provided to the manor house. So there, there's, it's just, just a clearing that was necessary to install the underground. It also, so what's not shown on this plan, but, oh, is it shown there?
Yes.
Oh, I can see, yeah, there are also two vernal pools that are located. There's, there's the one there, if you, if you pull that, yeah, if you pull that air, if you pull the plan down to the east a little bit, Jim, you're gonna see the one.
I see, yes.
Yeah, there it is, right there. You can see both.
No.
No, no. Push it down to the east. The whole plan. Yeah, it's, I believe it's, so it's, I'm looking at my plan here, it's.
There you go.
Yeah, it's, there's, there's two, there's two vernal pools that are, one's located on, on Mrs. Rosen's property, and then the other is located on Mr. Hockter's property. And so it was, that was also one of the, you know, was an environmental consideration with regard to, to that point. I just want to note that, and that, you know, that's, 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 that's where the utility, that's where the underground utilities head to the north to the, and service the manor house and, and the other, the other structures on the property.
Thanks, Mark. I just like to know, if anyone has additional follow-up questions, you can type them into the chat or let me know you'd like to speak again, and we'll. Thanks, Mark. Um, I just like to know if anyone has additional follow-up questions, you can type them into the chat or let me know you'd like to speak again and we'll. All right, a couple more speakers, Kara, would you like to unmute your line?
Yes, thanks very much. And actually, Mark, um, can you just quickly point to where the utility? The utilities go in versus where the vernal pools are again?
Mark, you're muted.
I just need to zoom up to the far left-hand corner, Jim.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of.
All the way on the far left.
It's a little.
It seemed like they were both visible with the two, two screens ago there. It just looks to me like the utilities come in. Just by that, uh, the triangle there at the top of Hagerty Hill and the vernal pools are much further to the east.
No, there's two of them. There's, there's also one to the west of it. Of, of that, there's one that's located on Rosen's property.
Okay, right near where your cursor is right now?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this right here, Mark?
That is correct. That is one, and then just.
To the, to the west of that.
Those are both of the, yes.
Uh, I see, so not the thing that says CS on it. Okay, okay, thank you. Um, so that was not my point. Um, I just wanted to um, to build on Patty Langto's um. Comments about wastewater uh, in, in the same way that the. Development will push traffic onto Ackard Hook. It also does push its waste off. Onto Ackard Hook as well and um, Fallsburg Creek. Is um, it, down, down it, down at the end where it comes out is actually more of a seasonal creek. Um, and we, I've, I've asked several times over the years about the quality of the water that comes out.
Creek that comes down here into our ponds.
Excuse me? So, sorry, I thought somebody was talking. Um. So, so I just want to point out that at the point where it comes out uh, of the waste treatment facility. And into Fallsburg Creek, that is, that part, portion of the stream, for whatever reason, is seasonal. Um, I, I, it's yet to be explained to us what the quality of the effluent is that's coming out of there. But there will be times of the year where that water is basically a ditch of effluent. Uh, and it happens to run under the road and then around the back of our property and through our yard. So um, I'm particularly interested in knowing more about that as, as, as is Patty. Um, I also wanted to understand why um. With the, you know, that the careful restriction of activity within a hundred feet of either side of, of, of rivers. Uh, or bodies of water like the Fallsburg Creek, who are so heavily protected, a hundred feet on either side. Um, why, why it's okay to uh, to dump waste into them? It, it just doesn't seem to add up. Uh, the class of, I believe Fallsburg Creek is a Class C body of water. It may be D, but anyway, suitable for fishing. Um, so I want to understand how that's compatible with, with wastewater. And um. And then to that end, I, uh, first Patty raised the question about it coming near to people's wells. I wanted to understand whether or not there is any other place that that effluent could go other than into Fallsburg Creek. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know, Mark, if you want to.
Think I, you know, I'll just take all the comments now and then, just so we can keep moving, Michael, and then respond.
Okay, okay, now that, that makes sense. I guess the one thing I just wanted to emphasize, we are taking down all the comments and we are going to keep track of them. And they are going to be part of the review process. Um, so the whole idea of the public hearing is to take all your comments. And then, you know, sit down and really go over everything we possibly can. Rather than try to, you know, come up with answers during the meeting, which usually isn't very successful. So please don't think that these, you're just hearing them now and that's the end of it. It's not. They are taken seriously and they will be reviewed.
Thank you very much for that, Michael.
Okay, Brendan, would you like to unmute your line?
Sure, thanks. I, I think all of my neighbors have really expressed most of my concerns already, but I did have some pretty. Uh, big questions about the precedent being set if we are. Supposed to be in an RC five district where the minimum lot size is five acres, why we are suddenly not following that and allowing to have thirty-six. Uh, it, it sets a precedent that I think is really questionable because what is, what is then to say, all right. The next person is welcome to do the same thing and have less than five acre lots and all of a sudden we are no longer an RC five-style district. Uh, so that, that was in addition to all of the concerns about traffic and water. Um, I, I'm on that road every day and it is already very uh. Nerve-wracking when you've got two cars trying to pass along with a pedestrian or a bike, so. I think everyone has expressed all of those, but I do worry about the precedent being set if we are allowing that many buildings. Thanks.
Thank you.
Right, John L? Would you like to unmute your line?
Uh, hi, yeah, thanks for uh, having me on. Um. You know, we just moved to Rhinebeck about two years ago. My wife and I live on old Primrose Hill Road. And uh, you know, I want to score a lot of the comments that uh, my neighbors have made and try to decide one nuance that I don't think was covered. But um, to the point of traffic and small country roads, you know, since we moved here two years ago. Um, you know, I've been struck by how many uh, children and dogs, I mean, these are small country roads. My five-year-old son and his dog is every day out on these roads with other kids in the neighborhoods and their dogs walking. Up and down uh, Ackard Hook and uh, and Primrose and Old Primrose and um, Vli and all the other roads that Hagerty Hill even. Um, and it just feels like it's, this is no place for um, three or four years of giant trucks rumbling through the neighborhood. Um, it, it just feels very counter to the, 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 the culture and um, the uh, setting that we, that we've built here, so. Um, uh, you know, I'm adamantly against the uh, the development. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and uh. You're like from Hagerty Hill, you had a follow-up question?
Yes, thank you. I, uh, first of all, I, I, I just want to uh, reemphasize that I agree with uh, my neighbor's points in particular about traffic. And uh, how Hagerty Hill Road is barely wide enough for two cars. And when you introduce a pedestrian or a person walking a dog or God forbid a horse, it is, it is, it is a white-nook ride. I wanted to fall upon, this is a small thing, is um, in terms of power requirements. And I hate to say it, Wi-Fi requirements for this community, but is it going to have an impact upon us as well? Are we gonna have more brownouts? Are we gonna have slower service because we're gonna have a more of a prime traffic area here for Wi-Fi? Is that something that's been addressed already by their plan or is that Central Hudson's problem? And that's it, that's my question.
Thank you.
Great. I believe we have made our way through. The list of people who wanted to speak. Is there anyone else? Uh, Linda, you have a question?
Yes, I wanted to um, pick up on what the last speaker asked about. Um, we do have so many outages here. Um, and I'm curious whether Central Hudson has been um. Been able to or been approached to provide a plan on how we'll increase power. Uh, that would be sufficient to even come close to addressing the needs of such a large development. Since it can't really handle what we currently have. Um, I think last summer, it was in almost every other day. Um, I don't know if it's considered a brownout, um, but everything seemed to be caused by a squirrel. Um, for the most part, and I'm just very concerned, um, as I'm sure everyone is, about the ability for Central Hudson. To manage um, what seems to be close to a tripling of our population in the small area in terms of usage. So has that been addressed by the developer?
I think that's a question that needs to be addressed in the future. It's only my opinion, but I think you're raising a good point and we should ask them to try to answer that question.
Thank you very much.
All right, and Gary? Would you like to unmute your line?
Um, yeah, I would just like to review some of the numbers from the two well tests that were performed by WSP. One in July twentieth and of nineteen twenty and one in January of this year. The numbers that I think I got from earlier in the presentation was for the latter test, the January twenty-one. We, uh, well, one was run at eight-point-four gallons per minute, well, two was at nineteen-point-five. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And were those the maximums that those wells could produce? Or was a number arrived at and you set that and tried to see if the well would produce that or not?
No, the goal of the test was to meet the minimum water, water, excuse me, the minimum requirements of twenty-five-point-eight GPM.
Okay, but.
So the combined, the combined yield is twenty-seven-point-nine.
Okay.
So therefore it meets the water demand requirements of twenty-five-point-eight.
Based on what water requirement?
The water demand requirements of the project, which is twelve-point-nine GPM, that's the average water demand.
Okay, so if I take twelve-point-nine, multiply it by sixty and multiply that by twenty-four. That's eighteen thousand five-hundred-and-seventy-six gallons a day. That, and that's a very old number. That number is at least two years old. Is that, and so the water demand has not changed from the water results that we saw two-plus years ago. That's a statement, not a question, because I have the numbers in front of me.
Uh, the water demand is based on the build-out of the project.
That's correct.
And nothing, nothing has changed.
Yep, okay. The uh. That estimate was questioned by me and some other people two years ago. Because that estimate included only three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-five gallons a day for irrigation. There was a question asked at that time of whether these numbers were for peak daily usage or average daily usage. We were promised an answer on that two years ago and to my knowledge, we have never received it. Can you tell me what the peak daily usage is?
Yes, the requirement for the state regulatory is twice the average water demand is the peak.
I'm not asking you about, did you assess what the peak daily usage would be?
That's correct. The, the peak water usage, daily usage is twice the average water demand of the project. That is what is required by the regulatory agency.
Yeah, I'm asking a different question. I am asking if you prepared an independent estimate. Of what daily maximum requirement this project could require? Or did you just work with an annual average?
No, I worked with the New York State DEC Regulatory Agency's requirement for this project. Which is twice the average water demand with the best well out of service.
Okay, so you really can't tell us what the peak that might really be required by the project is because you worked entirely with averages?
No, no, I'm comfortable in saying that the peak water demand of a project is normally one-point-six. Times the average water demand of the project. The regulatory agencies, being conservative, require not one-point-six, twice the average. With the best well out of service. Therefore, the project has a significantly, has developed significantly more. Than what is required to meet the peak water demand of the project.
Why was there a second well test in January of this year?
Uh, two of the existing wells have been sitting for quite some time, so we basically implemented a well redevelopment program. Basically cleaned the wells out.
Okay, and do you have the results for wells one, two, and three for the July twentieth, for the July twenty-twenty tests?
Yes.
And they were?
Uh, they're incorporated, they're in the report.
I don't think that, well, I haven't seen the report.
Well, I, well, I, you know, the bottom line is the wells have demonstrated. Uh, the water, the water demand requirements by the regulatory agencies, which is twice the average with the best well out. Reports certainly document that clearly.
Okay, um, I want to talk just very briefly about the proposed landscaping plan. Which I view as praiseworthy in its objectives, but one that may prove impractical. And if it is, it may lead to a large increase in water usage and this leads to a question that I want to direct to the planning board. Um, we live at twenty Hagerty Hill Road, our property adjoins Rockledge. And I know what kind of understory grows here naturally. When it's dense, it's not the sort of thing you want to walk through with sandals or shorts. It hurts and you can pick up ticks. On our land, it's almost all non-native honeysuckle, barberry, multiflora rose, privet, Asian bittersweet. Some of these have thorns, some of them can regenerate from small pieces of root. Controlling them is hard work. I speak from experience and I have the scars to prove it. Cutting or brush hogging these species only makes them mad and they come, they come storming back. Keeping them out of an area requires either constant mowing or a lot of hand-cutting and pulling or roundup, which has problems of its own. Keeping them out of an area planted in native species would be very labor-intensive. You can't mow it like a lawn and if you use roundup, it would have to be with extreme care so you don't kill the stuff you want to save. Two big condo developments in the Rhinebeck area, the woods and the gardens, and both have acres of grass. Grass requires irrigation and the amount of water allocated to irrigation in Rockledge's plan is woefully inadequate for this. The three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-five gallons per day of water that's in the plan. Is sufficient to put one-quarter of an inch of water on a plot of about twenty-six feet square, twenty-six by twenty-six feet for each unit. A postage stamp. Putting a quarter inch on fifteen acres, not a random number, it's sixty percent of the twenty-five acres shown as disturbed. On Rockledge's secret submission.
So I'm gonna just.
Would have, would require just over one-hundred-thousand gallons. So my question to the, to the planning board is this. Suppose that it's been demonstrated to the board's satisfaction that the water supply on the property is adequate to support the project as currently proposed. And that the project gets the board's approval. Suppose that for whatever reason, the proposed landscaping proves too expensive to maintain. The owners want their kids or grandkids to be able to run around outside in bare feet. Too many of them get Lyme, whatever. The condo association decides at some later date to put in grass, a lot of it. Comparable to the woods or the gardens, enough to have a major impact on water usage. What, if anything, does the association need by way of town, of the town? And town approvals? Would it be able to increase its water usage by a factor of four or five without coming back to the town?
Yeah, Gary, they would be basically altering their approved site plan. Landscaping is obviously part of the site plan that we approve. So a significant, and I think you're talking about a very significant alteration in the approved site plan. That would have to come back, I believe that would have to come back before the planning board for approval.
What would happen if it didn't?
Oh, come on.
What would happen if anything didn't, Gary? Come on, I mean, really, come on. Every now and then, well. What would happen if anything didn't, Gary? Come on, I mean, really, come on. Every now and then, well, maybe even more than now and then, people do things without permission. And great many people come to the planning board asking for forgiveness. They've already done it. And then they come in for the permit for it. So that's unfortunate, that does happen a good deal. You know as well as I do, if they don't come back when they're required to come back, what they're doing is illegal. And the town is in perfect position to say, put it back the way it was. If it chooses to, it can take any number of different actions. But the people very often will go ahead and do things without seeking permission, without seeking the necessary permits, knowing fully well what's required. And it always will become and always will be a difficult enforcement issue. There's no question about that.
Okay, I mean, my point here is pretty obvious that we're approving something that involves a reasonable probable, a reasonable probability of a vast increase in water usage. And should that happen, we haven't really tested the ability of the project to handle a major increase in volume without adversely affecting everybody else's wells. That's the issue.
I, I, I'm just going to raise the question and I'll ask Mark and others to respond to that. I think we have repeatedly asked the applicant to address these water issues. I, I'm not prepared tonight to say what they've said or how they respond. But I don't think we've ignored the issues of water in this project. Can others respond to that for me?
Yes, Melody says, Mark, so with regard to irrigation, Kathleen Fakewell has, you know, provided, you know, irrigation information for the proposed plantings. Um, and then also there was a flow confirmation letter that was prepared and documented with the Dutchess County Department of Health with regard to estimated demands. And so that, you know, that information has been submitted to the board and then also, um, so the, um, you know, the report that Tom Cusack from WSP is providing information is, you know, is being made available to the board so that, you know, so that the neighbors and the public can have access to that information.
Well, Mark, I have to take a bit.
Let me, let me just say, so Mark, you're saying that the information has been brought forward and Gary and others can review that information in terms of its completeness.
That's correct.
All right, so we're not lacking information. We just have to review it with that.
Yes, correct.
That is exactly what I did some issue with in in a letter that I sent to the planning board on April twelfth of two thousand nineteen.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure who's talking.
Oh, this is Gary Lockman. I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry, Gary. Go ahead.
Um, over two years ago, I sent a letter to the planning board and, uh, Mark, you were copied on it, asking a series of questions. I was promised an answer in writing to those questions by you in person at a later board meeting. I've received nothing and I don't believe the board has either. And among the questions that I asked are, what is the total acreage that will require new plantings? How is it allocated among various types of landscape? Under drought conditions and during the period when new landscaping requires regular irrigation, what is the peak requirement for water? What are the assumptions underlying this number? Has well capacity been sized for peak daily usage, domestic plus irrigation? If not, what mitigating measures are planned? If lawns are not currently planned, will there be enough water if residents subsequently decide they want them? There were others, but I think those are the most relevant. So these questions have been before you for over two years. And I don't think I or the board has received an answer. If the board doesn't view these questions as relevant, you know, so be it. I do, I think some of the neighbors do. But please don't tell us that you've given us everything we've asked for, because I don't believe you have.
Um, this is, uh, Tom Kiesak, one comment in, in, in respect to the concerns about the groundwater withdrawals here, comes to the understanding that the groundwater withdrawals and the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna basically call it a taking, meaning a groundwater taking, ground withdrawals. Come to the understanding that the approval process on the, on the water supply wells will be keyed to their pumping rates. So as I look at it today, the system will be designed to meet twice the average water demand with the best well out. Therefore, in the approval process of this project in regards to the, uh, the board members, the approvals, the approvals from Dutchess County Department of Health and operated by the authority, Dutchess County Water Authority. The approvals will be keyed to what these wells have demonstrated, uh, in the process here, the secret process. Therefore, the water taking will be memorialized in the approval process. So the concerns, I think, to some extent, the concerns about this increased taking uh, for irrigation would be addressed in the regulatory approvals of the project. And I can certainly assist any concerns that the board may have in, in assisting in memorializing that in the approval process of the project.
Well, again, this is Gary Lockman, but if the starting number of average daily usage is off by an order of magnitude, everything that follows from that will also be wildly off. So what I'm questioning is, how good is that average number? If grass replaces brush or natural plantings? And will you be keeping track of, I guess, what you're calling groundwater takings day by day? So we have some, so that you and, and, you know, potentially the town will have some notion of what you're actually taking out of the, out of the water table.
Uh, yes, that would be, uh, certainly, uh, the operators will be required to file an operation report on a monthly basis. This is a New York State public water supply source. It'll be operated by a licensed water operator. And the monthly operation reports. And I'm going to qualify, just keeping it simple in a layman's turn, the taking, the amount of water that is withdrawn will be filed with the health department every month as required and is foilable. And so that's why I'm just trying to put some meat to the aspect of, you know, what we're discussing here in the, in the water demands are going to be memorialized on a monthly basis, on an annual basis, and submitted to the health department.
Were those regulations in place when DTOP was operating?
I'm not familiar with, uh, the prior, uh, operation. I can't qualify myself on that. But this, this, this system is a New York State regulated public water supply source, and under those regulations must be operated by a licensed operator with the state of New York. And the monthly taking must be filed annually. And, you know, that there's no way of getting around that.
Okay.
Are there any other, any other questions or comments anyone would like to make, make this evening? Understanding this public hearing is going to be continued, certainly. Which will get to in a couple of minutes hopefully, but are there any other comments or questions for this evening?
I'd make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, well, let me first of all, tell you what your motion is. We're going to continue this public hearing to July sixth. I'm sorry.
No, I'm.
Continuing the motion will be will be to continue the public hearing to July sixth at seven PM. And I guess, Melody, you motioned and Kathy seconded?
Correct.
Agreed.
Okay, any discussion from members of the board on this, on the resolution to continue the public hearing? Okay, hearing done, I'd like to, uh, all who approve, please say aye, aye.
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 Okay, very good. This will give everyone a chance, two months to review the comments that have been given tonight, the information that's available. Uh, looking to see if further information is required. As I said, all the comments that are taken tonight will be part of the review process and will be looked into. I don't, Jim, did you have anything you wanted to add at the moment?
No, Michael, I, I think, um, we're good unless you want to talk about EF part three briefly.
Correct. As, as probably all you members of the planning board know, this is a type one action under seeker. And the EAF, the long form EAF has three parts. The first part is filled out by the applicant. Second part is then filled out by the planning board, our consultants, with our help, which basically tries to identify issues which need to be looked at, mitigated, things of that sort. And part three is the assessment of whether those issues so identified are being appropriately, adequately, and properly mitigated by the applicant in the plans they're submitting to us. I know that, uh, I think Jim and John and Kim started trying to pull together an outline of what the, uh, the final determination letter would be. And it seems, given the information we have now and the length of time it's going to take to pull this all together, it might be good to ask them if they would continue that process of trying to put together, um, part two and part three. I think part two has already been done. I think we've been discussing it, but to review and make sure everything, particularly in the light of tonight's comments, has been identified, any issues that need to be looked at. And begin to see how they might put that part three together. It's going to be a fairly long process. It's a very long document that's going to be developed. The, uh, if we get to the point for an approval document for this application, that's going to also be a very long document. So a lot of time and effort has to go into this to do it properly. And I think, um, to give our consultants time, because there are going to be a couple of other big ones they have to do too. Uh, I'd like to see us ask them to try and get started on it now or get restarted on it now, since I know they started about a year and a half ago trying to pull it together. Uh, so that's, but I would ask now for a motion to ask them to, to do that, to coordinate with one another and see if they can begin to do that. Could I hear a motion to do that, ask them to do that?
So moved, Melanie.
Second.
Second.
Happy.
Any discussion from members of the planning board? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? Okay, I think we've, we've certainly tasked our consultants with a fairly large job and we can have a couple more for them, I think, in the months ahead. Um, that's pretty much all I had for tonight. I don't know if, if John or Jim have anything else they wanted to add before we move on to our next, next matter.
I don't have anything further, Michael.
Okay. Jim, you're all set to go?
Yep, thank you for the, uh, this is a discussion. I'm set to go.
Okay, I, I want to thank everyone. I know it's late, but you're hanging in there and bringing their comments or their questions forward, because the more we know, the better a decision we can make in the long run, so it's much appreciated. Okay, our next thing is, we have one new application. It's Jeffrey Baker's site plan approval and special use permit for a single family dwelling at ten ten Route three oh eight. Mr. Baker is representative here?
Yeah, by me and Matt Towne from Willingham Engineering.
Okay.
So.
You know, please plan it, go it up to speed on what you are proposing.
Sure. So we're pleased to submit a site plan and special use permit application for a proposed single family home and accessory dwelling unit at ten ten State Route three oh eight. Uh, property's twenty four and a half acres in size. It's in the RC five zoning district, and it's also located in agricultural district. Um, with an agricultural exemption on the property as it's actively farmed. Uh, this, this property was before the planning board a couple of years ago for a single family home. We've come back with the home in a less sensitive area. There's part of Supasco Lake is on the property and that's a DEC regulated wetland and there's associated buffers. Uh, we're not proposing any disturbance to the wetland or the buffers themselves. Everything is outside of them. So what's being proposed is a two-bedroom, single-family home uh, with attached garage. And it's proposed to be constructed in the current location of the existing two-bedroom cottage on the site. That's, uh, that location is really the prime location for the site. It's got the best views and closest access to the pond. So that's where Mr. Baker wants to put his home. He's proposing to relocate the cottage to the north, yep, over there. It's outside of the buffer. It's as, it's as far from the road as we could get it. But as part of the application, um, we're going to have to go to the ZBA because the principal structure is set back further from the road than, uh, than the accessory dwelling unit. So we've actually already made application to the ZBA for that and, uh, and a couple other items that I'll get into later. The existing wastewater disposal system that was used for the cottage is proposed to be reused for the primary residence, both two-bedroom structures. So we'll, uh, we'll make sure that the health department's on board with that. We had previous approval for a wastewater disposal system from the last application that was before the board. We're going to reuse that as the reserve area for the primary residence. Um, because we're building the new parking area for the primary residence on part of the reserve area for the old cottage. We're going to have to go to the health department to get approval for a new wastewater disposal system for the cottage. There's a pole barn that's being, uh, that's proposed to be constructed just to the east of the primary residence. It's going to be used for agricultural activities. Uh, there's an existing non-conforming garage on the site, uh, the south. And that's proposed to remain. It's located within the side yard setback, setback and DEC wetland adjacent area, but there's no disturbance proposed to that. And then there's also an existing non-conforming agricultural shed on the site, which is in the front yard setback. You can't see it on the map there. It's, uh, yeah, right there. Um, and that's proposed to remain. And that's, uh, that's also an agricultural use. So, yeah, we're going to have to get health department approval. We made application to the ZBA for actually three variances, uh, the cover letter notes two. Um, it's the one that I already proposed that I already mentioned, which is the principal dwelling being further from the road than the accessory dwelling unit. The other is for the aggregate footprint of all the accessory structures being greater than fifteen hundred. And, uh, that's the existing garage, the accessory dwelling unit and the proposed attached garage. That's considered an accessory structure. And then the other two, uh, don't count towards that square footage because they're ag exempt. Um, and then the third possible variance would be for uh, the size of the garage. It's over nine hundred square feet. And in the code, this is kind of unclear to me, but in the code, um, it says an accessory dwelling unit can't be over nine hundred square feet. So I, I guess that. So, I, I guess that the garage counts as that, so, so that would be the other one. Yeah, the, there's an existing driveway access. There's just a small portion of new driveway being proposed for the principal building, and a slightly larger, but still relatively small portion of new driveway for the proposed cottage, which is almost four hundred feet from the road. So, yeah, that's, that's about it. Any questions?
There any living facility in the attached garage, or is it strictly just a garage?
Um, I, I'll need to check with Jeff on that, I know it's still kind of under development. But they're, they're very well might be.
Okay, because if it's just a garage, then it's just an accessory structure, it's not an accessory dwelling unit.
Right. Right, Michael, I might have created a little confusion, I don't think talking with Matt, I talked to someone about this, I might have misunderstood the question. But there, there's the total foot, square footage of all the accessory structures, but the fact that the garage is considered an accessory structure, so we, we can clarify that, just want to make sure we get it all right the first time.
Right, right.
Any questions for Matt?
I have a question, Michael?
Yes.
The, the gray line that's going through the site plan looks to be the driveway. And like the driveway penetrates the buffer. Has some thought been given to rerouting that, so you don't have to enter the buffer?
Well, it's already, it already exists, it's already, it's been, it's been there since, I suppose, since they built the cottage originally. I believe that's the original driveway, isn't it, Matt?
Correct. Yep.
So it already penetrates the buffer?
Yeah, it's, it's existing, it's an existing improvement within the buffer, that's correct. So we're not proposing any disturbance.
I see.
Any other questions for Matt?
This, this is Jim, I took a look at this. I was saying, Michael, it's Jim, I took a look at it, and the only questions I raised were just obviously the variances. Otherwise, I think this is generally pretty clean submission, didn't see any other issues.
Okay. Well, I have a procedural resolution I'll read. The town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby access follows on the application by Jeff Baker for site plan approval and special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125, respectively at 1010 1014 Route 308, within the RC5 rural countryside zoning district. We accept the application and supporting documents as adequate for initiating review by the planning board, its advisors, and the public. We're classifying proposed actions type two under SEACR for which coordinated environmental quarter review is precluded, and scheduling a public hearing on the application for June 7th at 6:55 PM, and directing the clerk to undertake or otherwise cost noticing and posting thereof. And who would like to go out for the site visit to this one, it's right on Sopasco Lake? Don't everyone speak up at once?
I'll go, Michael.
I'll go, I'll go.
Delise, okay.
And Joe will go.
Joe and Delise will go to conduct the field visit and report their observations at the time of the public hearing. In accordance with Town Code Chapter Nine, we are going to refer to the Conservation Advisory Board for review and written comment concerning environmental factors. And in accordance with the Dutchess Kindergarten Plan Development, we will refer to the Dutchess Kindergarten Plan Development for review, and we will authorize without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both the above cited field visit and referral, preparation of a working draft of an approval's resolution for the planning board's consideration on June 7th, or as maybe later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Melody.
Second, Delise.
Thank you, Melody. Thank you, Delise. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. Matt, Delise, and Joe will be getting in touch with you to set up the site visit.
Very great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have one last item, a sketch plan meeting. This is not a formal application, this is basically talking to a applicant about what they're proposing to do, and to give them some feedback to enable them to try and put their actual applications together. This is Rhinebeck Villas LLC. It's for Site Plan Special Use Permit, Wetland Permit, and Minor Subdivision for a hotel project along Route 9G and Middle Road.
Yes, good evening, my name is Rob Dupont, I'll be doing the initial presentation for the project. I do want to thank the board, I know it's late, I'll try to be as brief as possible. The purpose for this meeting is to basically reintroduce the project to the board members. The last time we did any kind of presentation formally was about a year ago, and then COVID happened, and we also had to do some redesign. But essentially, this is a thirty-acre parcel that's located in the Gateway North District. It's located on Route 9G, just south of the 199 9G Light, and it's, the southern boundary is actually Middle Road. It's generally in the vicinity of the Four Brothers Pizzeria, which is basically in the center like a chunk taken out of it. Thirty-acre parcel, we are proposing a hotel motel development, which is an allowed use in Gateway North, although it is subject to review by Site Plan Review and Special Permit by the Town of Rhinebeck. I'll give you just a brief synopsis of the history of it, we actually started to talk about this project informally before the board about three years ago, also with Art Broad, the previous planner. At that time, we were proposing a hotel development as well as a possible event center. But, you know, upon looking further into the zoning and with discussion with board members, the, the event center was not an allowed use in that zone, so we abandoned that, just in favor of the hotel motel development. We made our first formal presentation in December of 2019. And subsequently to that, in February of last year, we did a site walk-through of our initial proposal, which was a hundred and eight hotel units in a variety of, actually in a series of buildings, we're restricted to eight thousand square feet total for an individual building on the site. So, with the initial work that we had done, we did a site walk-through in February, and the board members had some initial reaction in that it was considered that we were developing too much of the property, number one, we weren't respecting the topography and removing too many trees, number two, and we were also being too reliant upon developing into the wetland adjacent area, as well as, we're subject to a two-hundred-foot setback from the Route 9G side. We're on the east side of Route 9G. We tried to get that reduced to a hundred feet, which is more of a normal setback in that area, but we were told that that wouldn't be possible, and that a redesign would be necessary. Then COVID hit, and we lost some months, but we did do a redesign, and we started to present before the board again, which is the, the site plan that you have before you. But then, I guess this was in June to September of last year, but there was some question as to some of the definitions in the zoning ordinance needed to be clarified before we could move forward, because it really had a direct influence on the density that was allowed, namely, the difference between residential and commercial hospitality bedrooms and guest rooms. And that was recently adopted, I guess, by the town board, so we decided to try to come before the board again. What you see before you is what we're proposing, it's actually a variety of buildings. It's being divided into two phases, phase one is the southern part. The, there's a key there, and, and by the way, this is just a rough, a rough sketch concept. Obviously, we have a lot of work to do, but we wanted to at least get before the board to show what our intent was and how we were respecting the initial input that the board members had given the last time that we had our site walk-through in February of last year. What you see is a variety of buildings, the green and yellow ones are hotel, so they have a common entrance and smaller hotel rooms. The brown and tan buildings are motel style, where the rooms have individual entrances, they're a little bit nicer room, and they also have covered parking integrated with the building design. And we also have our administration building, which is sort of the wedge shape in the center there, sort of a gray color. That's where our management office will be, housekeeping will check in there, as well as it'll be a hub for our utilities for distribution from our local water source in our septic. And then, a little bit north, we have our second part of the development, that's basically right behind Four Brothers. The total development area of the thirty acres only adds up to about, I think it's about six acres. There are a lot of restrictions based on not only the setbacks, but also the presence of the New York State DEC wetlands on the property. So, we've worked totally within the allowable footprint of developable area that we have available to us. But again, this is just a sketch plan, and it's going to be subject to a lot more work based upon the engineering work that our consultant engineer Mark Kraminsky is going to be doing. In fact, I'll turn it over to Mark at this point, so that he can offer a little bit more insight as to what the parameters are that are going to be affecting our design.
Thanks, Rob. So, as before, as the, as what we had presented before and had met in the field, the same engineering, well, I guess same, not only engineering, but site considerations still remain. So, you know, obviously, you know, access to the project site is from New York State Route 9G, which will require permitting from the New York State DOT. Just with recent projects that I have been involved with, it will require installation or construction, I should say, of a turn lane to enter into the, into the site, so that's certainly one of the details that needs to be addressed for the site. Obviously, water and sewer are a consideration, just as with the previous project that we had just spent quite a bit of time on with Rockledge. Although it's a smaller, smaller scale development, it will still be, the proposal is to be served by a central water supply and a central sewer. Initial, with regard to the sewer, initial conversation and correspondence has been developed with New York State DEC with regard to the sanitary discharge, there's already existing, there's already an existing discharge point to receiving water at Four Brothers, we're allowed to discharge that, to that same receiving point or receiving stream as, as for brothers. DEC has issued discharge standards for that. Water supply will need to be developed, just as the board just heard on the previous project, this one, there, there are no existing wells, so a groundwater exploration program needs to be developed and advanced for the property to ensure adequate water supply for the project, and obviously, you know, no impact to adjoining properties. Finally, you know, as, as part of the project, there, you know, some type of, you know, invest, you know, environmental investigation and archaeological, if necessary, needs to be also addressed. As Rob mentioned, this is just a sketch concept. And then, certainly detailed grading and drainage needs to be established. Rob mentioned that it's a state wetland, they're not actually state wetland, it's all federal wetlands on the property, and so those hundred-foot adjacent areas are associate, are, are based on the town zoning ordinance. And so more than likely, you know, the, the development is, is, considers those. There's, there's obviously going to be some, some grading and drainage improvements that will be within that, so also associated with this will, will be a permit for wetlands disturbance to the town of Rhinebeck. And finally, with regard to, you know, like placement of the units and, you know, you know, configuration of the units and parking, that needs to be further developed, this is just a sketch, so. You know, with the change, or, or I guess more fully defined definition of housing units, you know, based on the town board, just to ensure that, we'd want to, you know, initial review by the zoning administrator to ensure that, you know, parking, parking calculations and unit shape configurations and separations still apply to the code. And, you know, just to, to establish that before we go through and start to do detailed design. You know, obviously, some of the, you know, the important things to establish first are, you know, I, I think traffic is, is important, you know, we've done initial traffic counts and, you know, estimations for the particular project, and now it's, it's establishing a more, you know, formal dialogue with DOT on how ingress and egress to the site is established. And at the, and at the same time, you know, I think since, since wastewater disposal is, you know, we do have you know, a, a receiving water standards from the DEC, I think more to the, you know, forefront is to do some groundwater exploration. It may affect specific locations of the units, depending on what that, what that yields. And, and then finally, I kind of jumped through this, but Rob did mention, you know, it's, so obviously, it's a subdivision. The lot size for, and the number of units developed is based on, there's this, there's a specific formula that's included in the special permit conditions for, for this use in this zone. And that's still is, that's still being utilized for unit, you know, room, unit, room, however you wanted to find it, count on the property, and also as part of the subdivision, the lot configuration, so that the required area for each one of the phases, phase one to the south, phase two to the north, still meets zoning code. That's it, I, I think that summarizes everything that I.
Okay, thank you, Mark. I have, I have a few questions after looking over the site plans. On the colored site plan, it goes, it'll say, it has like number one rooms, two rooms, three rooms, four rooms, what, what does that mean?
I can address that, Michael, we actually have a variety, there you go, thank you, Jim. We have a variety of different room types in the various buildings.
Okay.
And this shows that diagram, this is actually the kernel of all of our building designs. We wanted to come up with room layouts that we thought were commodious for guests that would stay there, and also offered a variety of different kind of rooms based upon who would want to stay there. So we have, you know, small ones, medium and large, as well as, in some of the buildings, we, we even have sort of a townhouse style, that's room type two, the lower center, that's a two-story type unit, skinny but two-story. They all have similar amenities in that there is provisions for kitchenettes. And there also, these plans actually aren't new, we, we kind of wanted to have this kind of design early on, and we feel that there's a demand for this kind of hotel room in the area. So, we use different combinations of these types of rooms to create the variety of buildings that'll be on the site as well. So not only do we have different room types, they'll be combined into different building types, and then the topography and the layout will also create a lot of variety in the various building forms. But we, we hesitate to do any more formal design until we have more of an idea of what the restrictions are on the site, we'll design to those restrictions.
And these are all intended to be overnight stays as opposed to long night stays?
That's correct.
So, somebody coming in here for your larger spaces would be coming for a weekend for a. So somebody coming in here for your larger spaces would be coming for a weekend, for example, as opposed to a month or two weeks or three weeks? Is that right?
Well, that that's partially correct. We expect people to to stay a week. They come for a vacation in the Hudson Valley. And and you know, they wanted to stay a week. We think that that's probably a good market to tap into. And we feel that that consumer would be more interested in the more commodious units.
But they're not intended for long time stays?
No. We're restricted, I believe. I believe we looked into this. New York State has restrictions on the length of stay in a hotel. Anyway, I think you can't stay more than thirty days by law.
I think I think it's up to thirty days. I just wanted to confirm that for the record.
Correct. That's correct.
I do have another another question because I these do look familiar like what we were discussing last year. And I remember we had the discussion that number of rooms, like some of the rooms you have here not identified as bedrooms, but have couches and things like that in there could be considered bedrooms. And I know that on June twenty third of twenty twenty, Michelle Turk, the zoning enforcement officer, did give an interpretation on exactly whether those should be counted as sleeping facilities. And basically, the late, the last paragraph, we can get you a copy of that. I imagine you must have it. Is that the latest Rhinebeck Villas LLC plan submission proposes suites rather than singular guest rooms? And the addition of sleeper sofas in rooms separate from the bedroom appear to create two guest room accommodations. And at the time, these are in the A, B, A, A, and A, B suites. It is my opinion that proposed June first twenty twenty submission will surpass the limit of sixty guest rooms in violation of town code. Now, have you taken that into account?
Yes, Michael, we actually, we were looking at the definitions that the town board recently adopted, where they made a separation of a bedroom as being pertinent to single and two family dwellings. And then guest rooms, I think I have the definitions here somewhere. Maybe we also have Sean Kemp on our team who may be able to comment on this as well. But it seemed like the definitions that the town board recently adopted with regards to commercial hospitality allowed a variety of rooms in a suite type of layout that would be considered a singular guest room. In fact, there was a definition of singular guest room allowed for. So we felt that that interpretation allowed for these type of layouts that we had originally proposed. Actually, the original individual floor plans of the hotel rooms, some of them had two distinct bedrooms. We did change that. We feel that certain business travelers would like to have a separate bedroom or sleeping area, which is where the bed is indicated in there from a separate work area. Professors on temporary assignment with Bard College could use something like that or people on business trips. So the layouts, especially of the larger units, try to accommodate that type of use. But each one of these rooms, one through five, we consider to be one guest room based on the current definitions.
Were you are you referencing or perhaps Melody or Michael? Are we talking about lodging room versus?
No, no. Lodging 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 unit doesn't apply here. That only applies to country and two. That's not included in the definition for hotel or motel.
Okay, so.
This is going to have to go back to the zoning enforcement officer again to look at because it seems to me this is similar to what she opined on earlier. And the town board did not change that opinion, and neither was the opinion challenged. I think you have more than a hundred and eight guest rooms proposed here, bedrooms with four person occupancy. And I think that does need to be looked at. I think the density of the project also has to be looked at for country and two, which now are a hundred and thirty five guest rooms. It requires two hundred and fifty acres. For country and one, which allows up to twelve guest rooms, requires a minimum of fifty acres. And even in just your one hundred and eight on about thirty point five acres is significantly more densely built up than those other projects which have the greater acreage with them. I think that that frankly, and I do believe it's more than a hundred and ten bedrooms, but I think we'll let the zoning enforcement officer. That's that's her job to opine on that. My own view on this, and my view is that this is more densely built out than I think is appropriate for this particular piece of property, particularly given all the natural constraints that exist on it.
My name's Sean Kemp. I represent Rhinebeck Villas. And with respect to the most recent ordinance that was passed regarding the definitions of hotel guest rooms, lodging units, Delish, you mentioned the lodging units. That issue as well as the definition of hotel guest rooms that was all taken up recently in new town ordinances. The object of this project is to comply with the the definition of guest room as written in the most recent ordinance. So to the extent that there may be some variations in these preliminary plans from what is written in the most recent ordinance, our intent is to comply with the definition as set forth in the most recent ordinance. So I don't think.
Sean, are you saying that that allows for guests per room?
That's correct.
Okay, so everything else, parking, water, sewage would all be based on four people per room? Is that your understanding?
My understanding is that the way that it's written is that a guest room allows for sleeping accommodations up to four adults.
Correct. And so what I'm asking is, do we then multiply that out in terms of water and sewer and parking?
Per if you're using.
Is that your understanding?
Mark might be in a better position to speak to that issue. But to the extent that your guests, you're basing anything on a guest room, then yes, that would be correct.
All right, I'm just trying to understand how that four person multiplier works out in terms of.
Other demands of the project and things of that.
Exactly.
I understand the question. I can only speak to complying with the terms of the of the ordinance.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out how that rolls out in terms of overall site usage.
Michael, can can I ask you a quick question? What is it that either this group of people in front of us now or or the board is expected? What's our response expected tonight? Are we simply listening to the overall preliminary discussion? And then expect that more information will come as they develop the project? Or what are we trying to accomplish tonight? Because this is my first sketch plan. So could somebody please tell me what's going on?
It's basically for us to share concerns that some of us might have with them as they put together the actual application. This is not an application per se. This is not, we won't be taking any action whatsoever. It's to basically offer them, you know, my concerns if other people have concerns. Other people don't have those concerns. They can certainly share that also with the applicant. I personally feel this is a too dense use of this property. And I still believe personally, but once again, I think the zoning enforcement officer has to have the opportunity to review.
But to be clear, they're not an applicant.
Full application comes in.
They are not. They are not.
Thank you.
No, no, the the point here really is to discuss this before they get too far down, you know, the the road of spending money and spending time on drafting, you know, a fully engineered plan so they can get preliminary thoughts and, you know, ideas and and input on that to the extent feasible, obviously, through a sketch plan.
So Kathy, if I can respond to you somewhat quickly, you know, at this point, we're asking you to respond to density layout, the proposal that's before you. If you have any sort of visceral responses to this, this is the time to let the applicant know what the tenor of the board is at this time. It doesn't binding. It doesn't mean that we can't change our minds. It's just preliminary in terms of a sketch plan in terms of how are you reacting to this?
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? If country and one requires fifty acres and country and two, two hundred and fifty acres, just zoning standpoint, how how is it physically possible to have this many rooms on only thirty something acres? How does the law even permit that?
The the use is different. This is a special use permit for hotel motel. So those requirements, it's not a country in one or two usage.
So it so if it's not country in one or two, anyone could put more. I mean, what's the limit of rooms that can go on a certain?
It's based on acreage. You get a certain amount up to ten acres and then it's another room per additional. Forget what it is, some number of square feet. Sorry, Mark.
And and it depends on what's allowed in the zoning law in various zoning districts.
That's correct. And this is gateway north, which happens to allow for hotel motel use as a special use permit.
So the number of rooms is based on the thirty acres, basically.
It's based, it's based on a number of things, including the physical constraint of the property and the density that's proposed.
It does max out at sixty units per lot.
And just, sorry, sorry, go ahead. Just one quick clarification. Drawn up as sixty guest rooms, but that does not include the rooms that have the pullout couch, right? So when we're talking about those rooms, we're act, and that could still have up to four people, right? There's no limit on that.
No, that that's one of the points that were clarified. I at least in my view, having gone through the Z B A appeal of the Z E O's determination that Michael referenced earlier. And then going through the amendment process of the ordinance that has the terms. The idea that you could have a room that could accommodate four adults and have like a sleeper sofa, that would increase the the number of guest rooms. That wouldn't be one guest room. You'd have something more than one guest room. So you really are limited to the four adults.
And the four adults, if you use that as a basis, drive the calculations for parking and all the other associated septic water. So if if four adults becomes a basis, that that drives the calculations. But you're right, Delete, in that those rooms that have pullout sofas raise the question of how many people can be in those rooms at any given time.
There is a little bit of overlap with regards to parking.
To the definition here. The definition of a suite is a combination of guest rooms, which can include a shared bathroom and other rooms commonly understood to constitute a suite setup. Something that are being permitted in this code. Provide provisions for cooking. A suite is the combination of guest rooms. A guest room is a single room for sleeping, which can include a shared bathroom occupied by up to four individuals for sleeping purposes. For the purpose of establishing and regulating density in a commercial hospitality in this chapter, a guest room shall be defined as providing sleeping facilities for no more than four individuals. So if you're just doing a single guest room in all these buildings, you're not doing with the definition of a suite says, which is a combination of guest rooms.
And I never said that we were doing. I didn't.
That's the look at what you have here. And then has to opine on whether or not it's a hundred and eight guest rooms.
Well, whether.
That's that's the job of the zoning administrator.
I think whether it's a guest.
Why are we talking about it?
Whether it's a guest room by itself or it's a combination of guest rooms, it's still, you're still able to break it down into guest rooms. If you have, if you have one guest room or a combination of guest rooms, you still have, you can accommodate up to four people to sleep per guest room.
Is there a maximum occupancy for the property? In which case it doesn't really matter because there's no more than a certain number of guests that can be there?
No, no. And that's the problem.
So
you're you're asking the right question.
You're asking the right questions, Delise.
That's the right question. Have the answer.
So.
And actually, to some extent, the density, the property should be evaluated and determined by the property itself and the developability of the property.
Unless the suites are showing that the whole suite only has sufficient space for four total guests.
Yeah.
You outside rather, but whatever, but anyway, it just.
Exactly. I mean, these are the gray areas that I think are part of this application that we're reviewing.
And why I think I would very much like to have the help of the zoning enforcement officer because from my reading of guest room and suite, they do not agree what's being presented here and the occupancy that's being presented here. And as I said, I do believe, given the time that went into the comprehensive plan for getting acreage for other facilities, hospitality facilities, this was not the intent of the comprehensive plan. This, I believe, is significantly over development on this property. But as I say, that's my opinion. I would like the planning board's approval to go to the zoning enforcement officer just to ask for her to interpret what guest room entails, given the new definition and what suite entails, given the new definition, so that we have an accurate idea of exactly how many guest rooms actually for sleeping purposes of up to four individuals exist in some of these different room types. And that's if no one on the planning board objects to my doing that, I will I will sit down with Michelle and try to get these straightened out again as we did before.
Well, it's certainly the key to understanding what can and should be done with regard to what they're proposing or maybe proposing.
I think so. And I don't see how it's going to hurt.
So do I.
Get everything straight.
I totally.
Same page.
I totally agree. I think we need that guidance to help us understand how this all falls out in terms of numbers of rooms.
Great. So do that, Michael. And then maybe we'll readdress this at another point.
Do do we have, I just get the consensus from the rest of the board? Are they in support of going back to the zoning administrator to get this determination?
Yes.
I am in favor of it. Yeah. Okay, I'm missing a few people. Joe, Sean, where are you on this?
They went to bed.
No, still here.
Oh, there they are.
Melody, I think for everyone's sake, let's 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 be in favor of the client before they go crazy and spend a ton of money. Let's let's get them in front of the right resources so they can.
I'm sorry. Sorry, Sean. The question before you was, are we going back to the zoning admin?
Yeah, yeah. So let's get it. Yeah, that's what I was answering. And I was clearly saying, let's put them in front of there so they have clear direction. They can make good educated decisions.
Okay, Joe?
Yep, I agree. Sounds good.
I have to say, Joe looks like I feel right now.
All right, so I.
I will do.
We have, I think.
Planning board. I'll report back to the planning board. I will also share it with the applicant. I think it's important that, you know, we get this done as quickly as possible and get to them as quickly as possible. So it doesn't waste time, doesn't waste their time, doesn't waste their fine, you know, their money, their resources. So we can.
Or our time. Frankly.
Yep. Absolutely, Kathy. That's always at the top of my list.
Yeah. I'm going to bed then.
Being submitted to the Z E L.
Wait, you can't go to bed yet. I'm sorry.
What exactly is being submitted to the Z E L?
I'm going to ask the Z E O to interpret the actual occupancy intent of guest room and suite. Similar to what we did before, since a number of the rooms in what you're proposing here clearly have potential to be sleeping facilities beyond just the bedroom that's listed. You say these are just for one bedroom in each of these units, and some of these things are bigger than people's apartments. So clearly, there's an intent here, I believe, to offer a more, shall we say, more opportunities for larger groups. But it's not my call. It's the zoning enforcement zoning administrators call. And that's what I'm going to go and do and ask her to review these. I'll also call upon our attorney to assist with that. Are there any other questions or comments this evening? Are there any other questions or comments this evening?
I know it's late, but I was just hoping, I was hoping, I was hoping Mark could really quickly tell us what's going on with any discussions with DOT in terms of access on Route nine G. In regards to left turn lane discussions that started nearly a year and a half ago. Is that still ongoing? Do we have any kind of definitive answer of what they're looking for?
It's still ongoing, but just, Jim, based on other projects that I'm working on in the same corridor, it will, it's going to require a turn lane and analysis and details associated with that. And so and there, you know, the key is, so one of the details is, you know, location of the turn lane, how it's positioned, based on available right-of-way of both the road. So obviously, the key would be to try to do this without land acquisition. Or if, and is required, it would be on the west side, it would be on our side of the road. Right? So it's maybe not only a turn lane, there could also be a transition area associated with it. So that, so that detail needs to be addressed. And just one other item, I've just, I don't want to keep the board up any longer.
Thank you.
Just going to the CEO, let's just get, I know Melody brought up some good points with regard to, you know, obviously, water and sewer, that's something that I can address directly with the Dutch County Health Department. However, parking, the town of Rhinebeck has specific, you know, regulations with regard to parking. If that could also be included to something that goes to Michelle or the acting CEO at that time, just for some clarification, just so we maybe check that one off the list. That's all I say. Thank you.
We can certainly do that, Mark.
Can I just, can I just offer for relatively new planning board members that this corridor we're talking about, the Route nine G corridor, in the comprehensive plan was considered a gateway. And so part of the reason we're looking carefully at all these applications is how development along that gateway affects the entrance to Rhinebeck. So when we're talking about turning corridors and the potential of stoplights and other things along there, those are all the things that come into the overall consideration of how the corridor gets developed and how we integrate new and positive and important projects into there.
So that, is that basically from one ninety-nine to nine, or does it go across nine?
That is from the traffic light at the nine and nine G corridor of the approach to the four corners at Rhinebeck. And that corridor is an important, was considered, we could all disagree with this, but at one time was considered a gateway corridor, the community. And so there was an intent in the comprehensive plan to have that a greenway gateway, if you will. So when projects like this come in, we need to be weighing them against the goals of the comprehensive plan and later the zoning law.
But Melody, first of all, that's, it's a bigger, longer conversation, right, about policy? But let me just say this. So far, the gateway is car dealers, gas stations, you know, whatever all else.
Well, those, and I would, in answer to your comment, I would say they will be existing. And the job before us is to weigh pre-existing conditions against new opportunities. And I'm not suggesting that the opportunities aren't positive. I'm just putting it in the context of what was the original goals. So I'm just trying to integrate the thoughts of what came before, before new planning board members in terms of, here are the things that we weigh. I'm not, I'm not coming down one side or the other. I'm just saying, the reason that we keep bringing these up is because there was a vision for the corridor, which at the time was right or wrong.
Melody, is there examples of what there was envisioned?
I think the vision at the time was that that gateway would stay green and open and uninterrupted with other stoplights and things going down the traffic. I'm, you know, I'm trying to remember.
Part of the idea, Melody, was that was the way to not have to go through the village. It was supposed to be sort of a quick way around the village, you know, for commercial traffic and things like that.
Well, because you're coming.
The more things you put in there that could slow people down, then the bigger a problem it can be. Because we're all falling asleep here. So I think what I'd like to do is ask for, do a adjourn? Wait, wait, Sean? Sean, I think wanted to say something?
I do. Just because I don't want to go to bed yet. Just because I just finished my second cup of coffee. Can we just plan around these larger development projects that we don't have? Five other things to discuss, maybe the same night?
You know, Sean, we try, but it really, you know, we have to respond to the proposals that come before us, and when they're in the queue, we totally agree with you. We would like to say, nope, nope, not you. But we haven't yet figured out how we can do that responsibly in terms of meeting the needs of the applicants that come before us. So we're totally.
Yeah, I'm just thinking some of the bigger projects ahead of us, Melody, just for everyone's sanity. And just to be even fair to the applicants after, it just becomes, as you know, more than anyone, I'm sure.
It almost feels like we should schedule these bigger ones at the end of the night, so people aren't waiting to go after them.
Well, that's what we try to do, setting them at seven o'clock. It doesn't always work. We only, I only try to schedule four new applications and four public hearings, so it always falls that way. But when you have ones that are continuously continued, that is when it poses a problem.
Yeah, okay.
The other issue we grapple with is allowing the public enough time to offer their insights and opinions. You know, you don't want to cut them off. And you get into a public hearing like tonight, and there's a lot of people with opinions, so it's not easy.
Tonight, our willingness to listen, so I think that was good. But I think now, in fairness to all of us, I think a motion to adjourn would probably be most welcome. Thank you, Sean. Second?
Thank you, Sean.
I'll take that as a second, Kathy. Okay, we stand adjourned. I want to thank you all, because this was a very long, long night and a lot of issues and it's not easy. And that's why most people aren't willing to serve on a planning board in a community like Rhinebeck. It's not easy. And they're so much more responsible for. So you guys did a great job, and I'm very grateful to all of you.